Thirty, it's not quite as long a day. So, council, I believe we have a minute, we do?
There we go.
Okay, all aboard, it is Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M., I will call this meeting, a regular meeting of the Berry City Council, to order, uh, manager or council, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
None for me, mayor.
No? Okay. Under visitors and communications, is there anyone wishing to address?
Uh, I'm sorry, mayor, if I, I, actually, I did realize we do, uh, we will have an executive sessions, I emailed the council for personnel and real estate.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, not a problem. Thank you very much. Got it. Under visitors and communications, is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing and seeing, no one, council will move to the consent agenda, uh, that consists of the approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any permits and/or licenses?
No, there are no.
Okay, there are none, we have no contracts, uh, item, so actually, item B would be assigned state operating funds as fiscal year twenty-five revenue, assign twenty-four unexpended, unexpended funds as fiscal year twenty-five undesignated fund balance up to five percent, and approve a fifty thousand dollar transfer to the capital improvement fund. Uh, item D, excuse me, C would be approval, uh, approve creation of a special fund to track flood expenses. Uh, item D would be approve waiver of vacant building fees for flood-impacted properties, and item E would be approve the amendment to the grants management policy. Yes, sir.
Just for record-keeping, it's the lettering, everything you read is correct, the lettering is just different on the packet.
Yeah, well, we didn't have, there's nothing under B and nothing, so technically, there was no B or C.
Okay.
So I started, so in my mind, D became B.
I see what you mean.
And, yeah, because there, there weren't any items there for consideration. Uh, yes, sir.
I would just like to, to have council be aware when there's a vacant building that, uh, they're going to be waived with the fee?
Yep.
Or the scheduling of any of that?
I think, I think we are.
Okay.
Because we do get a copy of the permits that are issued in your packet.
Okay.
Every, every week.
Yep.
So whether there's a fee chart, I don't know that it would specifically say waiver, um, but manager could make, yeah, he could just make, um, the permitting office aware of that.
Yes, sure.
So they can just put a little notation waived or something like that.
Yep.
So then you'll know it's flood-impacted.
I had someone reach out, uh, that was, just wanted to make sure that the businesses that were being, um, waived were being waived properly.
Gotcha.
Um, they wanted to make sure that, like, the Newberry Building and some other things, and we know that that's not the case, um, but they also want to make sure that there's transparency with that, um, so they were just curious.
Yeah, I think that, that one might have been registered earlier, and because our downtown was flood-impacted, I think it would kind of be on a case-by-case basis. So I can't, I can't sit here and tell you that the fees wouldn't be waived.
Right.
Can't tell you that they'd automatically be waived, but I, but I do know the permitting office has a great handle on that. Um, could we talk a little bit, you knew this was coming. And listen, I don't have necessarily an objection, an objection in light of our current fiscal situation from the flooding, I don't have an objection, um, with assigning the fiscal year twenty-four unexpended funds as fiscal year twenty-five undesignated fund balance, because I think we're going to need all the help we can get. But I did have, I, I read about the city, we had budgeted a million dollars for, uh, that we were getting from the state for flood relief, we ended up getting a million fifty.
Correct.
So I'm just questioning the timing of the transfer to the capital improvement fund, and my question would be, would we be better off sort of keeping our powder dry, putting the fifty in the undesignated? We could always circle back around, and I'm not saying I wouldn't support putting fifty into capital, but I feel better putting that fifty into the undesignated and keeping our powder dry a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think that, that would be, that would give us more flexibility, and Dawn's on, and she can jump on to correct me if I misspeak, I think the, certainly the assigning of unexpended funds, we don't expect many, if, if any, at this point, this is sort of a, as the mayor mentioned, this is a, in case there is, after we, um, you know, receive FEMA funding, um, any sort of fund balance left, we need, we're going to need as much as we can get in FY twenty-five. So I don't want people to think that we are, we're moving seven hundred forty-three thousand dollars, that's not happening, this is, this just gives us sort of the preemptive authority to do so.
We are not anticipating.
We're not, yeah.
We are not anticipating being on the right side of the ledger on June thirtieth.
Yeah.
So it's, it's totally preemptive, I, like I said, I'd just like to keep the powder dry.
I think, and I'm looking at Dawn, unless you, you see an objection, I know we, we do have, it's, it's, uh, damned if you do, damned if you don't, so to speak, we have needs on the general fund side, we have needs on the capital side, so there's, there's certainly, um, uh, you know, rationale for doing it both sides, I don't, I don't have a particular objection to doing that, and it looks like Dawn doesn't either, so I'm, I'm fine withholding off on.
Yeah, my thought, Dawn, is just that we can't, we can't do capital to general, but we can do general to capital. Okay, you agree with that?
Yep, totally fine.
Okay, perfect.
So we'll strike the last part of that motion.
So we would not approve the fifty thousand dollar transfer to the capital improvement fund, so they're amending the consent agenda. Any want to help me out, anybody want to help me out procedurally, because it was born that way, so we'll have to ratify that, just put it on again next week, drop the last sentence, we'll put it on for ratification.
And if Dawn, if you know the answer, I don't think we need a specific action to, to have the fifty thousand be undesignedated fund balance, I, it'll just be.
No, because it's anything in excess of five, so.
Yep.
So you'd be covered that way.
Perfect.
Awesome.
So we'll ratify this next week.
Okay, awesome. Any other questions, council? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Uh, item four A, council, is to approve the city warrants, ratify the warrants from the week of July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and approve the warrants from the week of August seventh, two thousand twenty-four, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, is there any abstention? Yes, noted, thank you very much. Uh, city clerk and treasurer, it's all yours. Oh, I'm sorry, no, take your time.
Okay, so for this week, our focus in my office will be the, uh, August primary. We have our list of volunteers, well, not volunteers, but non-BCA members who will be working the polls, we have our BCA members working the polls. Um, I have a few I need to switch around, and they're both right here in this room, I think, sorry, no, actually, Michael and Amanda, you both can't do the shift, and they're the opposite of each other.
Great.
What time is yours, three?
For the, the two-thirty?
Yeah, I have to do the afternoon now.
Yeah, I.
Have to do the afternoon now or the morning?
I can't do morning.
Okay, and you had, can do.
I'm working six to two-thirty at the school.
Okay, so scratch that.
Okay, so.
So close, I thought, I thought I had it. So anyway, um, so we'll get that one ironed out, um, our absentee ballot request is up to six fifty-two. Returned less than half, um, we got three twenty-six back. We're really hoping that people will start dropping them off in the ballot boxes, uh, this week, so we can get them lodged as returned and accepted, it gives us time to review them, make sure things are signed, make sure that there are two ballots in the unvoted envelopes and the one in the voted. And it also gives us time to contact these people and give them opportunity to come and correct those mistakes, if they didn't sign the envelope, they can come in and sign it. If they put the wrong envelopes in the wrong, or the wrong ballots in the wrong envelopes, they can come in and fix those on their own, it gives us, us time versus waiting until election day and hoping they have that twelve-hour window to do it. Other than that, um, we're doing good on the elections, and we've been working on the tax rate, but that is coming up later in the day, in the night, so I will leave that for then.
Okay, thank you very much, are there any questions, council? Thank you very much, is there anything under liquor or cannabis control?
Not at this time.
With an impending storm watch, maybe there should be. I digress. Mister manager, it's all yours.
Thanks, mayor, uh, a couple of updates for the council, so, um, just updates on the recovery effort from, um, this year's flooding event, so the debris collection, um, the dumpsters that the city had put out have been removed, um, due to just, we had sort of run its course of, of, uh, materials being, been put in them, so they are no longer out. As, in contrast with last year, there's, there hasn't been any, any, um, uh, curbside pickup of debris by the city, um, just because of the, the volume was different, and we're not expecting the state contractor to be in Berry City, uh, so residents, um, who do need assistance, um, should contact the relief groups at the auditorium, um, we've, uh, you know, we, 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 that's their best avenue at this moment to get the, the most immediate, um, help for any debris issues that they may have. The auditorium is in standby mode, um, it was preparing to stand down until, uh, the forecast, which I'll get to in a little bit, um, but there's, hasn't been anybody using the auditorium as a shelter, it's just sort of on a alert status. The relief groups continue to be, uh, set up in the room, we've, we've provided room to some of them to operate out of Alumni Hall as well. Uh, the multi-agency resource center, the MARK, uh, continues to be open Mondays and Fridays, and we know they'll be there at least until, uh, at least through next week. That may change, but, uh, we know Mondays and Fridays, at least through next week, there'll, there'll be resources here in the city for people who continue to be impacted and, and need assistance. From code enforcement, we're, uh, down to two red tags, um, one is a foundation issue, uh, that was poured, uh, so that's hopefully been coming off the list shortly. Uh, the other is the home that, on Harrington, that had a structural fire, so that's, that's a long-term red tag, um, and the, the people there unfortunately had been displaced already, so it's not a new displacement of, of residents. As I alluded to, um, we keep hoping the forecast is different, but, um, we are unfortunately bracing for another round of very heavy rain from the, uh, the remnants of the latest, uh, tropical storm. It's, we don't have specific forecasts yet, um, we are, um, unfortunately preparing for the worst again, uh, so I just encourage residents at this point, if you don't follow the city website to favorite, you know, bookmark it on your phone, bookmark it on your laptop, if you don't follow the city's Facebook page, follow it, like it, uh, so that it's in your feed, and if you haven't signed up for VT Alert, this is a really great time to do that, too. We are, as the council knows, we're, uh, we contracted our own messaging system, um, which Chris is helping me with the implementation of, we're hoping to have it, uh, online by the end of the month. But, so that, that will be another way for us to get to people, but right now, uh, all I can say is, uh, to encourage people to make sure they have a way of getting, uh, updates from the city. We are, um, like I said, we're, we're going to have a little bit more information as we get closer to the storm, um, it's just not looking, uh, promising at the moment, but we don't have anything concrete to, to, to share at this moment, other than what people are also seeing on the news, um, as well, uh, about the potential track of this storm. On the positive side, um, you may have seen that yesterday we announced a, a partnership with the Bennington Martins, which are the, uh, pro team here in Vermont. Um, they, uh, they are going to be in the auditorium on August thirty-first, um, for, for most of the day, they're going to be doing a skills clinic, uh, in the afternoon, um, for kids, I believe, from, uh, grades five through high school, uh, and then they're going to do an exhibition game, uh, at eight P M. versus Berry first responders, um, and all proceeds, uh, are going to the Berry Community Relief Fund. So this is a great, great, uh, event that they reached out to us about, we're very happy they're coming here, um, and so I do encourage you, if you're interested, go to our Facebook page or website, go to the Bennington Mart, Martins, uh, Facebook page for all the information, um, really great to have them, uh, in Berry, uh, doing this to, to help our community.
So could you just repeat the date?
Sure, August thirty-first, Saturday, yeah, and so the, the skills clinic will be, um, in the afternoon, and the, the exhibition game is at eight P M. So they're going to have a, a, from what I understand, a lot of nice things in the intermissions, luckily, they're going to have mandatory timeouts every four minutes of gameplay. So they're going to try to recognize people in between and do fun, um, you know, contests and, uh, to get people excited, so let's, you know, it'd be nice to fill the auditorium for it, uh, they're, they're making their way here, and so it's, it'd be nice to, to, to be there as a, as a community.
And is anyone taking bets?
Uh, it could be a good fundraiser.
Interestingly, online sports betting is legal.
Yes, I know.
It probably wouldn't be hard to get a platform.
So we're very excited about this, we're, we're trying to fill out the team now, it'll be, uh, filled out with, uh, members of, um, police, fire, and public works. So we are, uh, we're, we're recruiting deep into our bench to find people who will, uh, who will play this game, so.
Will you be playing?
Uh, it's, it's TBD. TBD. The, uh, and then finally, just we continue to work with, um, with state, with Pat Molten, uh, and Downstreet on the EPA grant, so we've had a lot of back and forth this week. Worked with Angie on the partnership agreement, so we're in good shape there, um, and then I've been working with Angie's team on some of the, the legal documents they need for the application, like they need, uh, proof of site control for things like WABE and, uh, so forth, so we are, uh, working away at that, uh, talked to Pat this afternoon, uh, expect, expecting submission to the technical assistant team by tomorrow, that'll trigger a chance to get an initial review, and then obviously an official, um, uh, submission later on in the month, so, um, that work continues as well, and, and Pat has been, uh, doing a good job sort of, and Angie and, and her team have been doing a good job sort of keeping, keeping that moving, so that is, uh, that is it for me.
Questions?
Yes.
I was wondering about the, the house that partially burned on Laurel Avenue, is that going to be repaired, do you think?
Um, I believe that, um, one of the units is going to be a longer-term fix, I, the other two, I think, had just water damage, so they'll still need a little bit of remediation, but, um, fortunate, it's a three-unit building, and I believe just the one where the fire was concentrated is maybe lost, but the other two should be, um, online, is, is my understanding.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes. On the, the debris removal with the dumpsters being gone, we had talked in the past about eventually the city will be able to do rounds and collect up trash, is that still in your plans, or?
I, I, not, not at the moment, I think the, as we've observed, and our crews have observed around the city, the, the, there isn't sort of a scale for that yet, it's very, very isolated pockets that we're seeing. Um, so the, the, the easiest way at this moment is to go through the relief groups, I know, um, Berry Up last year, uh, actually, Adam Jacobs, through the volunteer coordination, had, had worked a way to get some of that done, so that's the best option at the moment, we're just not seeing the, the concentration at scale to make it efficient for the crews to get out.
And they're up at, um, the relief groups are still there every day, or just when the mark?
The Red Cross should be there every day, um, I think that, uh, people can reach Berry Up every day, the MARK, um, the MARK is there just the Mondays and Fridays, but I think if, the, the Southern Baptist also has some office space at the auditorium, so those are all good resources for, for debris assistance if, if needed.
Great, thank you, and then the other thing was, you know, all hoping that the storm changes course, um, but has all of the identified, like, culvert blockages and like, the, I know the dumpster's gone on Berlin Street, but are the ones that we knew?
Yeah.
Are they all gone?
Yeah, the blockage, so all the trash racks have been cleaned, uh, Berlin Street's bridge has been cleaned, we actually have staged the, the loader with a thumb there, just for, for.
That is the city one I saw out there, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so we have, I mean, at this point, might stay there the whole summer, unfortunately, but, um, it is staged there, um, Brian's team, the DPW team, has been doing, um, you know, catch basins as they can, also to just keep constantly hitting the, the high, um, the high danger, uh, spot, so, uh, the, the big blockages, though, are, have all been cleaned, so that's Brook Street, if, if you saw that after the flood, that looks like a dam.
Yeah.
I mean, it's doing its job, but it looks like a dam, so that was cleaned up right away, and then Berlin Street was the next one, and that was gone, and I know the other, we have other trash racks throughout the city that.
Like the culverts and stuff as well, yeah.
Yeah, and so, uh, we actually, um, after last year's storm, uh, our DPW created, um, new tra, they built in-house new trash racks that are angled at a specific way, so the, the debris sort of washes up over them, the, if you remember, they're, they, the, the trash racks used to be sort of more perpendicular to the ground, now they're at an angle, so what's happening now is that, uh, that's pushing, the water's pushing the debris up, off of them, so they're sort of self-cleaning, um, but when we do go around to them, um, it's easier to grab the machines and just scrape it right up before they had to sort of pick it up and grab it, now they can just sort of scrape, so the trash racks have been, um, performing, uh, better, uh, this year.
And last one, the tree on Brook Street by nine, by Maple and Brook, the ninety-two Maple Ave tree?
Yes.
That we had talked about.
Yes.
Actually, when you were talking about the storm forecast, that was another red flag that went up.
Yeah, let me follow up on, I don't have anything new on that one.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I think there was a question here first. So, um, have we been able to suck out the stor, the waste, the stormwater drains all through Third Street, Second Street? I know that the continued water and then all the debris that's in those, has that been continued to be cleaned up?
They've been do, yeah, so the DPW has, um, has basically been prioritizing all of those hard-hit areas since, since the July tenth event, so they've been, they've been making those rounds on North End, Vine Scampini, just the, the, the problem children, so to speak, um, so they, they keep, they, they've been focused on those, yes.
And if there is a, someone that has a drain that needs to be done, how can, how should they reach out?
They should, they should call the Public Works Office, so they'll, they'll get a, you know, Debbie will, will jot it down, and, and we pass those along to the, to, to the crew through, through Brian, yeah.
Justice Chakwo?
As you know, I'm worried about the clear cut on, behind Highgate, ending up on Railroad Street, so do you feel like there's enough drainage there to keep as much of it there as possible, that it's working well?
Working well, I mean, working adequately is probably what I'd say at this point, um, you know, I, I think that there's, unfortunately, there's a lot of places like that that could, could be better. Whether it's improved in, before Friday is, is maybe not possible, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just quick, when we got a, an email, you and I got an email from, uh, Pat mid-afternoon, do we need to get together on that tomorrow?
We, we can, yeah, yeah, I talked to her about that as well.
All right, just give me a call when you're in, Mister Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Amy?
Yeah, I was just going to put in a request for some street cleaning on the lower part of Berlin Street, um, unless it happened today, there are, there's a couple inches of silt and sand on either side where, um, the road meets the sidewalks, I think Lower Berlin Street missed the street cleaning last year because the bridge was closed for so long, that I don't think the street cleaner could turn around, but, um, you know, I try before every storm to walk around and pick up litter and whatnot, but I'm pulling litter out of several inches of mud on either side of Berlin Street, so if there's street cleaning equipment clear, I would, I would ask that, I have a, have a run on Berlin Street, and as of a couple days ago, there was grass growing out of the storm drains on top of the Berlin Street Bridge. Um, they're very narrow, and they, they, they get smaller, and, um, you know, it all heads to the low point in front of, um, some people's houses who keep flooding, so maybe i- if something happened this weekend, I missed it, but as of this morning, there was still a lot of, I mean, just, I, I can't even keep up with picking up the litter, you know, I pull it out, and it's in two inches of mud on either side of Berlin Street, so just a plea for some street cleaning there.
Thanks, Amy, yeah, we'll send, uh, we'll send crews there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, then we will move on to new business, item A is the river program mitigation projects update. Welcome. Cheers, haven't gotten any better. Sorry.
Sure. That's, I'm Keith Cubbin from CVR PC, here for the, uh, river program, I do the emergency management planning there, and, uh, going to introduce the rest of the team here today.
Hey, everyone, uh, Roy Schiff again, Water Resource Engineer with SLR Consulting.
Will Pitkin, Planner at CVR PC.
Alex Markucci, Water Resources Scientist with SLR Consulting.
All right, um, let's see, I sent a couple slides up.
Let me know which one you want, because I know we have a couple of.
Um, I think we're going to start with the historic slides.
Historic, okay, let me get back onto this. These ones?
Yeah, perfect.
So the historic slides, basically, the idea of these is that, uh, it's just to show that the river used to be much wider, um, much wider, and, you know, development throughout the last, uh, like century and a half, um, has really, like, has really narrowed, um, the amount, the width that the water has to move through, so obviously, the same amount of water moving through a narrower river is going to result in flooding, and then, of course, that, and climate change, it's more water than it was a hundred fifty years ago. So this is, uh, hopefully easy to interpret, um, this is from, uh, a fire insurance map, this is to scale, um, so the way these maps, they're very, they're to scale, they're accurate, but they're very low-tech. So it was originally published in nineteen twenty-five, and then as more development occurred, uh, they would periodically update the maps by just gluing an accurate piece of paper on top of it. So you can see, actually, the, um, the old river channel, and there are a bunch of examples throughout the city of this, but, um, when they first published the map in nineteen twenty-five, you can see the blue dotted line kind of going on the bottom middle was the width of the river, and then this is behind destro machines, um, and then at some point between nineteen twenty-five and nineteen forty-eight, um, the building, you kind of see the center right, was built, and they put a bunch of fill and narrowed the river at its narrowest point, um, to less than half its width in nineteen twenty-five. Um, that's a pretty dramatic example, but that is, there are many examples of that throughout the city. And you can actually see, uh, it's a little out, or the last slide, um, is that, uh, building, I don't know if it's the exact same building, um.
This one you want, Will?
Would you mind going to the last one, sorry, it's a little shorter.
Let me know which one, because I can't see that.
I believe it's number seven, um, so, two more, one more, this, oop.
Oops, sorry. There we go, that one?
Uh, that's the one, yeah, so that, I mean, uh, you can just see, that doesn't look natural, it's right up against the riverbank, and it's actually about, I don't know the exact number, but say twenty feet farther into the river than, um, what the river was prior to that building. So, sorry, if you could go to the second slide.
Second slide, yeah.
So that's just one example of where the river was.
This one, right?
Narrowed, yeah, and then this, so that took place between nineteen twenty-five and nineteen forty-eight, and it continued after that, but it also started well before this, so in, around eighteen ninety, um, give or take, uh, we can see, on the right half, we can see the river in its natural state, so much, much wider, I mean, much wider than it is at any point in the city currently, and then you can see some very early development that narrowed it, so you see that old, currently nonexistent granite shed, and this is at the end of Granite Street, um, before a bridge existed there, um, so you can see, like, it used to be a lot of, uh, wide river, floodplain next to it, and then you can, uh, you see piles of granite, and then buildings, um, that narrowed it drastically, so that is, um, a big contributor to, uh, the flooding we see today.
Maybe just go to the next slide, give you a little more context, um, that's the full slide, and then the next one here, and these were, um, some drone photos taken of, of this same area. During, like, right after the flood, so you can kind of see the encroachments, and I think one of the things we just wanted to share with you is that, um, and we talked about this a little last time we were together, is that, you know, over our history, we've slowly kind of squeezed down on the river, and I think in the, like, lately, we're sort of making decisions about backing, backing away from that river, and we're all here faced with decision-making, so sometimes the historic context is helpful. And along those lines, um, I guess we can, let me think, I don't know, should we hit to the map, um, if you, maybe Nicholas?
The map?
Could pull up the map?
Yep.
We met with a few more people, um, to discuss potential buyout areas or buyout areas that were taking place, where people have come to the city, and then we've also, um, a few people said, you know, why not look at some of the big parking lots and, um, granite shed areas, some are fully occupied and active, some are a little less active, and some, there's storage all along the river. And, and again, we haven't approached any landowners, but we just, in the context of this discussion, we thought it's important, um, these are big areas along the river, um, particularly along Stevens Branch, um, and as we were thinking more about these areas, um, and we shared this map with you all, like, even some of the parking lots in these areas occupy the area of between three and ten houses. So we're thinking a lot about a house here, a house there, and are people interested in buyouts, but also we have these big semi-open areas, some more used than others along the river, so there are opportunities, and we kind of put a flood mitigation river lens on a map, and that's kind of what you're looking at here. And really, it's a, it's, it's just to kind of get us, um, kind of bring some of these larger parcels along the river, um, into thought, and if people are interested to explore that, then we have to figure out good ways to approach landowners and see if, you know, explore the level of use and what's going on, and sometimes it can be tweaks, like, um, in certain areas, there were former log yards where they, you know, the company said, we're not storing logs anymore, and all of a sudden, we have a fourteen-acre floodplain restoration project down in Brownlboro. Um, that's pretty meaningful for the city, so that was kind of our thought in putting this map. So that was kind of our thought in putting this map together again. No one's been contacted, nothing's really happened. It's really a thought exercise about are there larger parcels or spaces around the rivers and bridges that can catch water, shed debris during flood, and just give us a few relief valves as the rivers come through the city in flood in flood condition? So maybe pause there and see if anyone had a chance to look at the map and have questions or thoughts.
So I've been thinking that lowering the pavement in some where it was possible would have an immediate impact, but I also thought it might be cheaper, easier, and faster, depending upon the owner, to have it to happen, rather than the buying out of the houses, demolition of the houses, and then floodplain. Is that accurate or not so much?
I'm sorry, I missed, so lowering the pa- you said pavement?
So if there are parking areas along the river, if you lower the pavement there so it became a floodplain, at least in part, would that be an easier thing to do than the process of buying out houses and demoing the houses and then creating floodplain there?
I think, Bo, I would say, and others can chime in, I I feel like both have their challenges and their benefits. Certainly, you're not removing a structure. The the thing about restoring floodplain is you kind of need to create a safe limit. So on the back edge of that reconnection, if you're kind of cutting into a parking lot or an urban area, you know, maybe there needs to be a wall or some rock slope or something to actually like physically contain that flood. And then really, it's about the so, you know, how much area can you get? Like there are parking lots along Stevens Branch where you can imagine half of them go lower, so you would just drive in and go down lower. And then you'd have to sort of create some boundary around that. But the same applies whether it's a house, a a big vacant lot, a granite shed. I mean, i- you have to really think about what happens on the on the perimeter of those of those areas, for sure.
Thank you.
Alex, do you have anything to add or thoughts on this?
No, I mean, as well as I, we. As Roy mentioned, it was kind of just like a thought exercise, but we looked at kind of land that is currently open, so like parking lots or just kind of open space as kind of one category. And then we also looked at, you know, are there large buildings adjacent to these areas where it could be an opportunity if you were going to like lower the parking lot to add additional flood storage? If you moved out and also acquired an adjacent building, something like that. So there's kind of two layers to what we looked at as far as potential floodplain restoration on these largely industrial properties.
Alright, and then I guess the other thing we wanted to speak to you about was we got an initial list of prioritization of projects, which is the homework we had asked you all to do, which looks great. And then the nice thing, when we looked at the list we got at this afternoon, so looked at initially, is that there are four projects that seem to separate themselves to the top. The first being the Tressel Bridge, second being Scampini Square Buyouts, and then third, the Scampini Square Floodplain Restoration Projects in those buyout areas. And then finally, the Berlin Street Bridge Elevation Project. And then I was excited to see fifth place, the hydrology and hydraulic study to really get a good model of how water would flow through the area. And and honestly, I'm clearly biased, this is what I do for a living, but to model these things and sort of play, can I take every bridge out and keep the city safe? To have those tools is really valuable, and there are many communities who are who are using those tools to make important decisions like you all are. So so we are excited. I think I was started saying, okay, if if these four or five projects are our priorities, what do we do? Well, for Tressel, we need to go talk to the state about this project. It's clearly been a discussion in the past, we've seen some studies with E-Trans, and perhaps some of the flooding has maybe changed perspectives. And 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 so that would be a first place. And then I think then the second thing would be to really maybe speak with Nicholas and others about the the status of the Scampini buyouts and and how those are moving forward. And then really to start looking at an area and and what could we get for flood storage in that area? Should the the homeowners who are choosing to to relocate in that spot? And then finally, looking at the Berlin Street Bridge and what would a design look like that would create some more storage in the area and what's really possible at that project? So I guess in our minds, those were all highly ranked by us as well. We think they're great projects. If I kind of view if we could do one or two of those, it would be a great benefit for the city. But again, happy to hear a discussion, since you all did the ranking, some of the ranking, and we can share thoughts as a little further.
So I kind of punted on my vote. You know, when you were, and I'm learning a lot, you were in the last time, and what really struck me was the statement that, and Amy, thank you for sending me the link, by the way, but that we don't really even understand our own storm system and how water even moves through our storm system, or even if it does move through our storm system. We don't really understand how water moves through the city. We don't have any modeling, we all hold our breath, we hear three to four inches of rain and we all freak out. And but three to four inches of rain in a two hour period is very different than three or four inches of rain in a forty-eight hour period. So I'm learning that. But as I looked at that list, what I didn't see, didn't see any cost estimates. Some of them ranked like effectiveness, you know, likely to be highly effective, but the vast majority of them had no ranking at all. Didn't tell me if they were moderately effective, highly effective. And so what I realized is that is that I really don't, I think until we have an understanding of how water moves through the city, how it moves through the city in a two inch, two hour storm versus a two inch, twenty-four hour storm, until we understand those things, we're and until we understand costs and until we understand effectiveness, we're kind of flying blind. I mean, it's almost an emotional list where, you know, we looked at the areas that were hardest hit, and we pointed the Tressel a lot and say, and I'm not saying the Tressel isn't a high contributor or isn't, but I don't really have the data to tell me that. So it would seem to me that the first place you really need to start is a good hydrology and modeling study, and then also understand how our own storm systems are working, or as I said, if they're working at all. You know, we talked about the the large one that moves underneath the city. We have no idea what the condition of it is, none, through the entire city. So once we do that, I mean, that's a big list that will likely never complete in my lifetime. I think what could be, and then we've got this list of projects that are on this on the table. And we have a list of projects that aren't on the table that you just talked to us about. So what I'd really be interested in knowing is if we had, pick a number, thirty million dollars to spend, how would you spend it? Even if there's a project that isn't on the list, you know, for example, I think of the area past the Granite Museum between Berry and Berlin. You know, that's a huge undeveloped area. And so would that be effective in terms of storing water, not only move it, water that has already moved through Berry and prevent the water from backing up, but also preventing us from affecting our neighbors in Berlin and Montpelier? So should we be asking you folks as the experts and the scientists to tell us what we should be doing, including projects that aren't on the list? If you see a large parcel, Merchants Row, and you say, gee, you know, the river used to be there, and if you lowered Merchants Row, land that the city, and that's a hypothetical, by the way, I don't think it would be effective. But but to hear that, you know, what would, when you look at the city of Berry, forget who owns what, what is where? Tell us as scientists what would be most effective? And that's was my takeaway on it, yes.
I'm going to more or less echo the mayor. You know, these, it's great that we had this opportunity to go through and and say what we wanted, but really, I'm hoping you guys will say, here's what would have a big impact. For me, like saving as much of the residential neighborhoods as possible in the nor- in the North End would be my highest priority. So if there's something we could do along the Stevens Branch then there, that would be, that would save those folks the water from crossing three oh two, that would be great. And and then I thought separately about the Potash and Gunners Brook, like some, the Potash Culverts just seemed like a great project. However, really, I don't want to be the one. I want you guys to say, impact would save these neighborhoods, would make it better and safer. That's what I would like to hear.
So that was, oh, sorry, we'll just go right in order. Council Augustine?
I'm sort of, I'm gonna sort of both and the comments that have been made in that it's my underst- two things. First of all, would love to get a sense of how many applications we think we can feasibly put in, because we we talked before, would love to apply for the whole ninety million for Berry City. But I think that one of the factors that would help us consider what to greenlight, because as I understand it, one of the criteria for forwarding a grant is going to be that effectiveness ratio, you know, the risk reward ratio. So there may be things that we really want to have done, but are not as likely to pass through the grant process. So I would love to to know that information in order to say like, yeah, I'd love to have this done, but this project is a shoo-in because of those those factors. Would I think get my vote over even something I'd really like to be done?
Council Spolley. Council Waszak, flip a coin.
So I I had a lot of trouble prioritizing for many of the same reasons, and I think that I'm sure the city manager got my list and was like, this was not the assignment sign yet. But I like to make up my own rules, so I did, and I grouped them together because I felt like, what's the point of removing the Tressel if you're not gonna put floodplain restoration in, was it Fortini Place or whatever? So I sort of lumped them together because I think that they should be more of a package deal for some of these things. I don't think really they can stand alone, that's my opinion. My other question is, how, are there any things on the list that we as a city can do ourselves that are more affordable, let's say, not such big ticket items? I'm thinking about like the Culverts as I was looking through the list. Are those things that we can sort of chip away at and put into our budgets as we go through the next few budget seasons and say to our taxpayers, look, this is what we're gonna spend our money on, and this is how we're going to do our own work on this list and not necessarily have to go out and get grants for it? So those were some of my questions about prioritizing.
That's Wesley.
So I just want to be, you know, we don't have, yes, we need, you know, to have all the data that we can get our hands on, and doing the hydrology study is important. But you know, this, we can't not do anything for the foreseeable future, like the city won't survive. So those, so my question, Mr. is like, are you suggesting that like we hit pause on doing the top four? The Tressel, the Berlin Street Bridge, and the Scampini stuff, like pause that until, I'm just like understanding what the next step is.
There are some that are going to be helpful. There are some projects, some of the buyouts on Scampini Square, they're sort of self-evident. You know, it with all due respect, it doesn't take a walker water scientist to figure that out. So there there, so no, I am not at all suggesting, I wish we had moved faster and 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 done more. So I'm not at all suggesting that we shouldn't do anything in the meantime. But I I guess I'd love to have you react to my comment that, you know, when you don't understand exactly how something works and you don't have a model that provides you with with variables, you know, what does, you know, what does a two inch storm in forty-eight hours, what does it look like? Well, if we don't know the capacity of, if we don't really know the capacity, we we don't even know where all of our storm system is. So how can you possibly come up with a meaningful, effective list if you don't know that, you know?
Great points from everyone. I guess, so this assignment, I guess the goal here was to participate, have a little bit of an iterative approach. Everything you all said is exactly like, we are responsible to understand what has the benefit cost ratio that's gonna do well. And what are what are the most flood mitigate, you know, best flood mitigation projects? The way this process is working is that we're not gonna be able to go through like a full design process before the the HMGP pre-application is due. So some places, we have some models, they're not the best models, but we can kind of use them to maybe take a bridge out or widen a bridge. Other things, we'll use our experience in other communities and projects around the state to say like, this is really important. Like the Tressel is actually is a very obvious benefit, right? We've seen so many flood photos of of it clogged with debris, it's in a very big flood prone area. I mean, a lot of the bridge work, in my view, is low hanging fruit. But the the modeling will answer the will answer the questions in more detail. So we kind of have to keep both things moving, we have to sort of keep refining this list. We'll have a flood mitigation lens on it to be like, this is all working. We did a little bit of prioritization, we can, we need to fill this out a little more, and now we kind of have some rankings from you. And we'll be sure to say, no, this project really isn't gonna fly or it is. And so again, I think it's a little bit of an iterative process, and that, so the next step of this will be, once we land on the top projects on this list, we're gonna have to dig a little deeper in design feasibility, like are there are the landowners willing? And then what do the what do the design volumes look like? What could the cost of this thing be? If we have a model, we'll plug the alternative in and see what those benefits are, understand the damages that have taken places around them and weigh those too, and be like, this is, this thing's gonna really go. So that's that's kind of our task. Maybe maybe we came at you for prioritization a little too early, but it was really also just to kind of get a feel for you all who experienced the flooding and seen all these problem areas, and we've talked with DPW and some residents, Danielle and Amy and others. We've kind of talked with some of the people who have kind of know know the area and the flooding pattern. So again, we're gonna keep building information and then try to converge on some good projects with you all. That was kind of the point of the exercise.
Yes, sir. Watch your head.
These guys have got a good thing going, and I guarantee if you ask every granite company down in this area, they would help with this, because they have to clean out all the machinery. All kinds of ground, granite, it can come down by train. The idea beyond the city where you talked about, at open land, beyond the museum, we can build that a lot wider. We can do heavy duty ground, pile them, just like you got by the R K Miles Bridge. And we can widen it, and that would give us a big area to take all the water away from the city. It would move it quick, and it would push it away from Berry City and save a lot of houses, a lot of stone sheds. I've watched a neighbor up the street, South Line, we had a boat crossways from our house, he was gonna come down and pick it up. He never had a chance because his loaders were working, cleaning up the granite sheds and to get back in business. I stopped there all the time, I was like, I can't even think of the guy's name, but it's a big thing, it's called Granite City, it's right across from where they work on trucks anyways. But that guy would be more than helpful to get trucks, haul that big blocks and ran it down and and lay it right in place. We have the equipment to do it in the city of Berry. A worker will do it, an excavator will do it, and stack blocks, but build it as wide as we can right down there. That's gonna continue getting rid of the water from our area. That's just one of my suggestions, maybe low cost to the city. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Watch your head. Again, Council Stockwell.
I think Council Dearing, did you have a?
Yep, Council Dearing.
I was just wondering if you could speak to some of the curveball we kind of have here in Berry with all the granite in the rivers, you know, with the the barriers in the river essentially making those walls and not allowing nature to kind of do what nature does. Can you just speak to the history of that maybe, or even how some of that really affects what we're dealing with here in the city?
Yeah, you know, that's a piece of like the flood legacy of many, many towns and cities, is that we've had granite or other sorts of fill, we kind of fill in with walls, like you see it through Montpelier, you see it here, that these rivers are trying to kind of squeeze down. So there's just no place for the water to go, like the volume of water, until it gets outside of that essential rock lined trough, and then it's where we are. So a lot of this thinking in the map that Amalek's made is like, are there areas where we can, and even doing the parking lot ideas, just push those areas down. So if you had, you know, Main Street or three oh two, and you could have a second level where the water and debris would, you know, even if it caught debris and ice and thaw floods that you can get out easier than if it's going to the bridge or not. So the legacy of just filling in the rivers, and again, I've been, because this is a, you know, things we've been working on our whole life as water resource scientists, and now we're seeing this flooding, like we're thinking more about like. I've been, because this is a, you know, things we've been working on our whole life as water resource scientists, and now we're seeing this flooding, like, we're thinking more about like, you know, how we, how do we get here, then how do we kind of undo this? And it's been a long process of, of this filling, and that was why Will and I, we were looking at, at these photos and saying, and reading flood accounts from twenty-seven, like, wow, there was more space along the river then. And then, you know, through industrialization, we kind of filled in and, and, and some sheds left, some came. And some bridges were added, some dams are gone now that we're here, and some, some are still here. So there's like a whole mix of, of things along the river, and now we're in a stage where we're seeing sort of unprecedented amounts of rain in short periods of time. And we're seeing this all over the region where, like, people are starting to pull back, you know, um, just 'cause we need to get the flood waves through where, where most of the people are living.
You know, if there's any way to tell the stability of these banks after these storms? I mean, I've kind of gone through, um, some of them a little bit, just walking around. Um, and some of them have definitely kind of come down some, um, and I'm a little curious about, you know, how stable they really are, and who might even take care of that?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, you know, bank evaluation's pretty common after floods to make sure if you have walls or something, um, they're intact, so. You know, I think it's something like DPW could do, like, initially, and then if there's concern, finding a structural engineer to sort of like evaluate the walls and make sure they're intact, or a geotechnical engineer to do some evaluation, like, through these walled intersections of river.
One thing, uh, that I will admit I have the least experience of anyone at this table with floods, but one thing that's really stood out with Berry's experience is there is, I mean, just the topography, the narrow streams, there, there is going to be flooding. It's, it's just a huge problem, but there are places, a lot of it is, uh, debris-based or like specific points where the water backs up behind narrow culvert or narrow bridge, a place where debris gets caught. And so addressing these specific points, those might be the points that have, um, kind of outsized impact compared to just, uh, restoring, say, any old parking lot, like a parking lot that would allow debris to be caught, um, not, or that would allow debris to be caught in a place where it doesn't result in back, in backup that floods the surrounding area as opposed to have, say, the Berlin Street Bridge, just a big place where we know debris catches. Like, that could be, those would maybe be places where you'd have higher benefits for the same costs as, um, restoring a parking lot, you know, half mile upstream that um, would contribute incrementally, but not drastically reduce the flooding. Um, so there's basically, because of the topography and the amount of water that's coming through, there's, it's not a problem that can be totally solved, but it's a problem that maybe those can be big steps.
It's important to consider both approaches. I think you're talking about both removing or modifying structures and other, um, constructions that kind of trap debris, but also providing additional area for floodwater sediment debris to settle out, so it's kind of like, using both is kind of the most resilient type of strategy.
Counsel Stockwell?
Would the hydrology study do all the little streams and brooks? I have to say, I started a job years ago in, in a building, and I went to look at the basement, and they said, no, no, you can't go there. Because the river runs through it, and sure enough, you open the door and the river runs through it. I don't think that's anyone's named river, it just is a river that goes under the city. So would the hydrology study be that comprehensive?
So we're, we've actually talked about a couple studies tonight. A hydrology study is the generation of water from a rainfall event and how it runs, runs into channels. And then there's a pipe evaluation study that the mayor discussed, so what are, what's happening in our stormwater pipes? Um, and then the, finally, there's a hydraulic study, which is, when water is in the river, how is it moving through, like, the depth and velocity? So, um, it's kind of a combination, in urban areas, you kind of need the combination. How much water comes in, comes into certain areas? How does that water behave once it's in channels, and how does that water behave once it's in pipes? And clearly, you've all talked about, well, Stevens Branches Up, the water and sediment go into the pipe, and now the pipes are pushing water at us. So the interaction of that, of the channels and pipes is really, it's very complicated in urban areas, especially old areas that have been built up sequentially over time, where there's not great mapping, and you are not alone. There's a lot of this going on around Vermont even, our small state right now, in village centers, um, in small, in cities and towns, so. Yeah, it's sort of a combination of finding that. So, like, the unnamed small stream, um, sometimes they rise up to the size if they're in a drainage valley and there's a building in the way, and we know the river comes through, sometimes that might make it into a model. Other times, we just say, well, we're thinking about what happens downstream, and we know that water's collecting and somehow getting into this channel or this pipe. So you still have, you have to account for all that, um, either in one of, in one of the models. So I didn't mean to give you a long-winded answer.
No, no, thank you.
So the studies that we've been speaking about, um, how long would that take?
I would say, like, typically, there's a, there's a, there's a few, there's a step, a few steps in it. You collect your data, like, where are the pipes, how big are they? What is the, the survey of the channels? Um, and then what's the land use, and how does the water move through the watersheds coming to those channels? That takes a few months. You do it out, outside of win, outside of winter, likely when the leaves are off the trees, so you can see really well. Then you have about, I don't know, a few months of modeling, maybe, um, you know, maybe it's a year process to do one of those models. Um, and get information, and then you're sort of testing alternatives and, and actually like, building and really understanding what's on this list.
And rough cost? Something like the city of Berry?
To do the city, um.
Nothing I'm gonna hold you to.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say, like.
It's where the engineers get worried. Look, I'm not gonna be coming back at you in six months saying you said.
Yeah, forty to sixty thousand dollars to probably do like the, a full model of the whole city and all the flow. Um, with like the survey, data collection, I'm just spitballing.
Forty to sixty thousand? And that would include the storm system, or that would be?
Yeah, I think that would include the storm.
Could we get that on the agenda for next week?
Sounds like a bargain.
Taking it out, taking it out of our funds, getting going on that? No, I'm serious. Sooner we get going on that. Sooner, and, and, you know, to your earlier comment, I don't think anyone is suggesting that, you know, we do nothing in the meanwhile.
Yeah, of course.
But this is where we really have to depend on your expertise. If, you know, if you look at our list and say, look, you're just wrong. Uh, you know, this project right here is likely less cost, less resistance, and more effective. Then obviously, you know, we need to hear that, because we're not, we're not sitting on that side of the table.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll certainly say that, and that's certainly our job.
And it's, you know, daunting. These are not inexpensive, um, you know, inexpensive projects.
Yep.
Uh, we're fortunate to have ninety million dollars in, up for grabs in Vermont Emergency Management Grant, but, you know, if you think about what's happened, uh, in, in Plainfield and Lindenville and St. Johnsbury, you know, those were communities that are eligible for those funds that likely weren't going to apply in, you know, six months ago, and now they are. So that competition has only gotten more. I mean, we're, as a city, we're gonna be putting a lot of money into mitigation projects for the foreseeable future, because I think about, and, and having grown up here, you know, I know areas where we used to play along the river, even fish along the river, that have really changed, you know, just in my lifetime. Uh, you know, from the time I was, well, fifty years, from the time I was thirteen till today. And as you were showing us the history, it dawned on me that, you know, those projects happened, you know, as the city grew, and as the city became more prosperous, uh, and more industry established here, and we ran out of, you know, people ran out of places to build, they said, hey, we'll make some. It's just this stupid river, and I'll just take a little piece. And so they did, so they projected into the river, and that happened one or two projects a year for seventy-five years. And here we are. So you think about it, it's somewhat discouraging, because I think, okay, so if we do one or two projects a year to take it back, well, seventy-five years. Wow. So that goes back to my point where if you see something that, in your opinion, would be really effective, doesn't matter whose property it is, I'd really, I think the council would like to know about it so that we, we could react to it, and maybe we'd say, well, instead of pursuing these ten projects that won't even be as effective as this one, maybe we should be talking to those folks. Counsel Spaulding?
Um, but, uh, I, I agree with what you're saying about us encroaching on the river, but I also would caution everyone to recognize that, um, it's not just one thing, it's a multitude of things that are happening. And it includes, you know, new developments that are upstream from us, it includes more rain, larger rain events. And so I, I think we can say, okay, we need to fix these culverts, but that doesn't mean that we're necessarily going to put in a culvert that's going to handle that hundred-year flood. We have to handle the, we have to be realistic in what we can afford and what's doable, is my assumption. And so how do we do what makes sense for us and also restore those places where the river really used to be, so that we can, I guess, live in communion with the river instead of, like, aggressively angry at the river all the time, so.
Yes, sorry.
Just to your point about use of the river, I have a painting in my office that hangs above my desk that is the, the north end around the, the Thwing Millie, or it's entirely a meadow. I should send a cop a picture of it out to folks. Um, it's really quite beautiful. And I hung it there for, sort of for inspiration, um. But I, what I would like to hear is, is sort of what our next steps are, what our, what our dates and deadlines are, what you need us to, when you need us to respond to your feedback about this list and what our deadlines are.
I can speak to that some, uh, so by the end of this month, basically, we need to have, uh, basically have a refined list down so that, you know, we can do those VCA's, have that, and be able to get that information, because currently the, uh, date for, have the pre-applications in for us, or for the city of Berry is the end of September. So we have a little more grace on them and the other communities, but it's so we can have, get that initial, uh, engineering, so we can get those applications in. So, you know, next steps, I mean, obviously, you know, the, the three oh eight trestle, you know, has obviously been a problem in the city, so I mean, that's probably a project, I would just say we still wanna progress on. You know, to be honest, even when we were out doing the, uh, site visits, it looked like the trestle would actually even shifted a little bit in this last flood. You know, which I was like, well, maybe it'll go away on its own. One more, you know, obviously we don't need another one. But, uh, uh, you know, outside of that, you know, I mean, obviously the buyouts, if we're, if, if the city's pursuing a buyout on a location, and, exactly, you know, a lot of them, you can look at, just look at a map and go, oh, yeah, that time to go against the river, that obviously is gonna have a decent mitigation action there, uh, of restoring some flood. So, you know, there are some easier ones there, uh, to review, you know, um, like the Berlin Street Bridge, that's a much tougher one, because you have the railroad there as well, so it's not an easy, just, oh, you can just lift the bridge, you know, because, you know, with that railroad piece, you still have to, you know, be able to allow the trains to get through and everything, so you can't just raise everything nice and easily.
And there's no approach.
Yeah, exactly.
So you could grow, you, I mean, you literally can't raise it six feet on one end without changing the grade of the road to six feet to accommodate it, which is gonna require rebuilding two miles of road.
Exactly. It's a very strained location, so I mean, it, you know.
But Counsel Spaulding mentioned, just take it away.
Yeah, or maybe put in a slightly smaller structure and go with a, a little weight limited, you know, so cars can cross, but no large trucks or something. Other ways you could still possibly still have a bridge there, but, you know, a smaller sized structure. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's just us trying to get this list refined down, so we can, you know, ideally to, to give Roy and his team as much time to work on those VCA's, uh, to be able to get us to that September, that September deadline, huh?
So I think our thought is, we'll come back and do a little more prioritization after seeing your thoughts, and maybe come back with a little more info- information on the mitigation side. Um, start to think, maybe the top few, top bunch of projects, we'll start to think about quantification, like, what, what could something like that cost? There was a question a, a while ago about how many do we, again, pre-apply for, just to, to open the door for full application if the state were to accept those, um, and I've actually asked the state this, I haven't got quite a perfectly straight answer, but, you know, they're talking like millions of dollars to each community at least. So, um, we can sort of set the stage for, you know, how much, what it costs to take out the trestle or to, you know, elevate and redo Berlin Street and just kind of ballpark that, and, and sort of give you like, uh, you know, a list of costs and some of the anticipated benefits and, and sort of help, help prioritize that. So that's kind of maybe on us as a next step, and then we could share the list back in the order with a little more information now that we've kind of seen some of your thoughts, um, and go from there. And then I think we'll, hearing some of the information, we'll maybe think about, um, really important locations that maybe couple with some of these projects, like, like there are, there is a, a garage right next to Berlin Street that actually is a really important, could be an important debris spot, so. You know, we can sort of think about maybe this map and this list a little broader, like, where are the most important spots? And come back with some other ideas as well.
That would be great. Mr. Burns, do you have a question?
My name is, uh, George Burns, I'm the owner of Capital Candy. I'm on the river, I'm inside. I've been there for over fifty years, so I've experienced many, many water issues, and, and I don't wanna reiterate and talk about the problem. But I have to say, I'm a lot more encouraged than I would be prior to. That seemed like it, uh, to me for the first time in a long time, it's actually, uh, I mean, process, process is about trying to do something that I could. I would really encourage this, this, uh, council to, um, understand that you really have an opportunity to leave a legacy, a legacy that, um, that hasn't been done previously up to this point. We could talk about the devastation, because everybody knows all that stuff, but I think that the challenge for me has been that it doesn't, it hasn't appeared like very much has happened up to this point. And, um, I think that's the part that is, is really frustrating and difficult. And, um, again, uh, you know, I don't know what anybody thinks about legacies, but, but this council is in a really unique, and, and mayor and city manager are really in a unique position where, where they really can do something that, that really makes a difference. And I hope that you get past the words of, um, that are used all the time, like, um, complicated and difficult. I, I hope that you stop using those words, because those are the words that have been used forever as far as this, this process is concerned. So I, I hope that, uh, I mean, your job really is to solve problems. Some are easier and some are more difficult. But there's an opportunity now, and I, I hope that it doesn't get bogged down in studies and red tape and, and on and on and on, and just more and more and more conversations about how complicated and difficult things are, and nothing actually happens. Again, honestly, I'm a lot more encouraged than I would be prior to.
Thank you, George. Counsel Spaulding?
Uh, one more question about the number one, the, the project that rose to the top, which is the Trestle Bridge. Wh- when you say, we say we wanna remove it, but my question is, how do we apply for a grant and say we wanna remove something that doesn't belong to us and that we have no jurisdiction over? Like, really, should that really be our top project when we really don't have a lot of control over it? I guess, I, yes, we all agree it needs to be gone, but I, what I'm wondering is, how much money and time are we gonna spend on something that we have, have absolutely no control over? And how can we better spend our time trying to get rid of it? That's my question.
We have, I and the manager have conversations about that multiple times every week. We will likely, at some point in the future, be meeting with the folks, with the, with the stakeholders, with VTrends, with the railroad, with manufacturers. That's a very good question. And I'll be perfectly candid, you're, we're dealing with the railroad. The railroad didn't, didn't get any permits when they rebuilt the tracks and, after the twenty-three flood and raised those tracks twelve inches. I can't do that as a property owner. Nicholas can't do that as. Nicholas can't do that as a municipal manager, and yet the railroad can. Railroad simply has um, incredible powers that have been written into federal statutes. So um, I would, my preference would be to, I I understand that the railroad would like to keep a railroad crossing of the Stevens Branch in Barry. I get that, I understand that. I'm hopeful that we can get something better. And we talked about making the Berlin Street Bridge better, making the Willie Street Bridge better, making other areas better. So I can't sit here and promise you that the city of Barry uh, is in a position to negotiate or demand the removal of the trestle. But I think that if we're, if we're a good partner, I don't think it's unreasonable. And I don't think any reasonable person could look at what's there and say that's acceptable. You know, it's not. So could we come up with something that's better, understanding, we understand what you want? But we look at the damage in our city and react to that and build something better. Build something that does, I mean, that's all we're asking for. It's that we just don't want something that traps debris.
Right, but what I, my question.
I don't, I don't think we can answer your question.
Right, so so what I'm saying is, we're focusing on, number one is the trestle. For, it it's risen to the top in every single thing that you've presented. But how do we present that as a grant opportunity to say, yeah, they need this trestle removed? We really don't need any money for it, the railroad controls it, the railroad company controls it, so.
Yes, so I mean, our thought was to go to the state emergency management and V-Trans and have this discussion and say, we're working on this project with you all. From a flood mitigation and council point of view, this is rising to the top of our list. Like, we want to, you know, want to discuss this. And so we're, that's kind of why I think the top few projects, we need to do a little more homework on, like, look at plans and then try to make sure they're viable projects. So that feels like it's on us um, to sort of meet with those folks. Maybe we'll be in touch if you all are.
I'm sure we can make that happen.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that the city of Montclair successfully did have the railroad moved and also created a walking trail along the river. So it's not impossible, it's been done, that's something we should consider.
They didn't demand it, they negotiated it.
Yeah, we could do that.
Exactly, and that's exactly what we intend to do. Yes, sir.
Make sure I do my name this time. I'm Gary C. Hall Senior. I did twenty-three years in the military and I also worked with engineers, okay? I helped build the road when Irene went down through all the way to Rutland. I started in Woodstock, I was standing there flagging, cars stopping them, because people wanted to go, roads are this wide. You know how they rebuilt them? We took it out of the river. We moved it back up, we did construction, we cleaned that river, and when it's done, it's all fresh water again. What this state needs to do, and I'm willing to fight the state of Vermont myself and I have to run for governor, and get this up dredged out all the way to Menuski. And then that'll cut out most of our problem. Because you look at Berlin Street Bridge, just for an example, if you look at the wall behind Arcade Lounge, it's collapsing. Where they've already filled that bridge on that side, because the guy from Johnson, Vermont came down with a special drop and he loosened those tires up and broke that stuff loose and it went past like that. I was right there watching what happened. They helped him direct traffic with his uh, dump trucks, so they could haul that wood out of here. But the tires went past and they were gone for miles, just like that in five minutes. I'm willing to go to the state of Vermont and fight the governor. If I have to run for governor, I'm dead serious, I will do it. Because I've talked to so many people in Barry in the last month and businesses and everything. We have a pizza shop that's closed, it's one of the best pizza shops I've had right in downtown. We're having people ready to move out of this town because they're sick of it. And I've watched houses, for the fourth time, my house is in there, down Main Street. It's a shambles, it's not safe to win the basement, it's that bad. It's a two-story structure, I owe taxes on it, but it's on hold right now. I'm going to fight the state of Vermont to buy three houses right there, they haven't already bought the lower one behind me. And then give them to me and move them to do, build something different for the veterans, another veterans place, because we don't have, we have too many homeless veterans in the state of Vermont. And I'll find a piece of land that's how I enjoy to do that, okay? That'll be my responsibility. Mr. Burns, I used to work for him years ago, Capital Candy. When the heritage thing happened down here in town, I walked down the backstreet to go to my house. A car crowded over because there was a truck coming, it put me right in a sinkhole, right against the gravel, nailed my, my cap, my kneecap, right into the gravel. I thought I was going to have to dive in there, I'm serious, that's how close it was, it was dangerous to me. I'd limped, I'd gone down Main Street in a wheelchair, go down by Deepwater Square in a wheelchair and see if you could cross the road, it's like this. I almost went over backwards, a guy pushed me across. Our main street is sinking. I'd worked underneath this when it back when it had gas leaks. And a house floated over by, I can't even think of the name of the place, but the school, the playground over at the end. Mom and blew up because she lit a cigarette and turned on a light switch. And I, we found a gas leak right in front of City Hall, we traced it all the way up to.
You you you're getting, you're getting a little off topic on me, sir.
Anyways, we need to to, we need to force the state of Vermont to let's dredge these rivers. We gained four to five feet in the last year of sand right by Berlin Street Bridge. And around that corner, there's a big island right there now. Used to be a little one on the left, a little one on the right, now it's taken up most of that space. And it's just getting worse as you go down further. And I know there's a pipeline that goes underneath the end of Main Street and back up to go to sewer plant, because every time it backs up, we smell sewer. And they come down and they pump it for us, and that stops the sewer, but it's coming all the way up Berlin Street down there. And I know we got to work around that, but once you pass that, you got clear saline down there, that's why I said, make it wider. That's going to help us a lot. What was done on Maple Avenue, all it turned out to be is a catch-all for brush, you put the water right down the main drag. That's, it helped, don't, don't get me wrong. It slowed it up for a temporary minute to give the guys something to do down below.
Okay, we're, you you getting a little off, are you running for governor already?
I'm serious.
Does that sound like a stump speech to me? I'm picking on you. No, we're, listen, with 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 regard to, we hear a lot about dredging, I've spoken about riverbed maintenance. That's not the only answer. Riverbed maintenance is important in certain places, and I'm sure these folks will agree, but not sort of wholesale excavation of the riverbed. It just, it it just doesn't work for for the city, it doesn't work for our neighbors. So I promise you that in the hydrology study that the council, I hope, will approve at our next meeting. These smart people will address riverbed maintenance or dredging, as some folks like to call it, I promise, okay?
One other thing, we need to address crosswalks, because they're very dangerous when they go up and down down by Deepwater Square. I'm dead serious.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I see them. Scheduled for repaving in in uh, two thousand and twenty-seven, and I have already spoken with the Secretary of Transportation to let him know that uh, it simply can't wait that long. That that there are certain sections that I believe, and again, I'm not an engineer, we're just looking at other areas of the Main Street reconstruction project. There are certain areas that I think may have failed prematurely, the mix. So, so there's a lot that happens between Tuesdays and Tuesdays, and I promise you, we're working on it, don't hit your head when you sit down again. Okay. Hopefully, Cal, where were we? Amy, did you have a question, a comment?
I was just going to say um, to Councilor Spalding's question about the the trestle and kind of how to lobby for that. Um, one of the things that was stunning at that public meeting they did, and I put the link to the slides in the in the chat, is they did do budget workups on that. And it was four hundred thousand dollars to remove it and two million dollars to replace it. And again, everyone in the room was stunned, there was no one representing the local business um, or anything from the railroad there. It was all just local citizens, and and we were all just stunned, like, why would the state spend one point six million more for something that none of us want? When we're dealing with flooding? So to me, you know, proposing for state money, we say like, please give us the four hundred thousand dollar option instead of the two million dollar option that does not help us with flooding? And where's the the support for it? So, yeah, it's asking for state money to take down something the state has, but it just, I mean, it just didn't make sense on the math. So they did do the cost estimates for that already. You know, that's one point six million we could spend on a different flood project.
Yeah, I appreciate that. If you, you gave me, if you Google Bridge three oh eight, there's actually a tremendous amount of information uh, available on that, on the Bridge three oh eight, which we also call the Trestle. There were actually six alternatives presented at one point, and I think the price tag was a lot bigger. Mr. Anthony, you would know it was a lot bigger than one point six million, I think it was, it was over double that one. Yeah, four, four million, yeah.
Yeah, I meant it was one point six million more.
It was a big number, so, yeah, I mean, there's certain parts of that that just, um, you know, again, as we talk about resources and where to spend them and what is most effective, what makes the most sense. Some of those options related to Bridge three oh eight just don't seem to sort of pass that test. So we'll keep working on it, I promise, and these folks will address it, I promise. Anything else? So we have our next steps uh, in terms of the, um, who gets the proposal together for the hydrology study? And the hydrology and modeling study, is that something that we will?
Well, I guess you put me on the spot.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, so like.
I'm famous for that.
I could um, like, just prepare a budget, like, sort of off to the side from this project, just to give you a, I, like, we could put our heads in it a little more now that we've learned more about the inner workings of where streams are and pipes and all. For like the three, like the w- the hydrology, hydraulics and and the pipes. And share that with you all.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a little more complicated with the three different pieces, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, early in your presentation, you said you were thrilled to see that hydro- uh, hydrology study actually kind of filtered towards the top.
Yeah.
And I took that to mean, I'm glad these people are finally listening. Well, I think we are, I mean, I don't think there's going to be a tremendous amount of pushback from the council if we look at spending, I'll even give you a little wiggle room, forty to eighty thousand dollars? On a study that will help us better understand how water moves through the city, how effective our storm water system is, and how we best mitigate the effects of flooding. You know, we need to know what what's going to work and, you know, what's not. There, I guarantee you, there will be, likely be a few op- uh, eye-openers in that study where we look at it and said, geez, you know, we've, none of us ever thought of that one, including yourselves. So we're anxious, I think we're committed and we're anxious to get going. So thank you, is there anything else you need from us? Yes.
One last question.
Sure.
So just, just so I understand our timeline and our next steps, I mean, I'd asked this earlier, I just want to clarify it to make sure we're all on the same page. What you're asking for is a list of projects that you'll move forward with pre-engineering on by, our next scheduled council meeting is August twenty-seventh. So are we thinking that we will look at that list and move that list forward on August twenty-seventh? Does that seem feasible all around?
Yeah, but you're going to, you're going to give us a little feedback, right?
We're going to put some work in it and, yeah.
Yeah.
So before that meeting, um, kind of our lens on the priorities and some other thoughts. Hopefully, we'll connect on the trestle and try to do a little feasibility work on the top, top bunch of projects.
If you um, email me, I can help you with that, I can get you connected with the right people.
Sounds great.
Yes.
Speaking of the trestle, have you folks worked on a project like that where you've advocated for that kind of removal or?
Um, yeah, on rail lines, like, we um, we worked along, um, this is a little off to the side, but um, in Lemoyle County, we worked on a big floodplain restoration project? That was on the old Saint Jay and Lemoyle County Railroad. And the the conclusion was that the area was to be federally rail-banked, so the railroad could always come back and get it. And that, I actually, as we had this discussion, I'm thinking maybe this works here, that the area stays a rail crossing, the bridge goes away. And then when they put the bridge back, they kind of have to demonstrate that there's no change to the flood levels. So maybe this project, if all goes great, could accomplish the first step of that and relieve the bottleneck. And then the next pro- if there is a project that the rail would have the option to go back. And again, I'm speaking without having talked.
No, you're, you're describing exactly the conversation that we've had with the railroad uh, to date. That, I mean, we all know that you, you know, you don't snap your fingers and a railroad bridge appears. It's probably a three to four year process from the time they say to an engineer, you know, we want this type of trestle? That will uh, you know, mitigate the effects of flooding, you know, whether it's different shaped piers. So we've been having that conversation because, and if the city simply keeps an open mind, well, what we get in return is we get the trestle gone tomorrow. So, you know, if this weekend does come to pass, then that trestle, you know, if the trestle had been removed, that trestle isn't going to be there. And then they'll have time, more time to study it and do exactly as you were discussing. But in the meanwhile, what is an obvious flood hazard that no one wants? I don't think the railroad is necessarily, you know, thrilled with that, with Bridge three oh eight as it currently exists. That goes away sooner rather than later, and and a clear hazard, flood hazard, goes away almost immediately. So that's kind of the discussion we've been having.
We at the region have had actually the exact same discussion with uh, V-Trans uh, on this of trying to utilize this funding, you know, while it's currently here, get the trestle out. When they, you know, acquire that funding, if they want a new bridge down the road, they can then put that in, but.
Right. And we can't, you know, we can't sit here and promise that we're going to embrace any design they present. But I can't sit here and say we won't either. I mean, it's all, it's all hypothetical until you see the, if there is a replacement bridge, if you see the replacement bridge design, and then we give it to you folks and say, all right, tell us what's going to happen with this bridge. We did the modeling. So now extend the modeling to this bridge and tell me what it looks like. And if you could say, well, it's not perfect, but it's ninety-five percent better than what was there, well, we got rid of a hazard. Thank you, I learn a lot every time you come in. Probably not enough, but but I'm, I'm trying really hard. And if you do go- Google Bridge three oh eight, there is a lot of information on that bridge, it is infamous. Vermont, make sure you put Vermont in there, you won't, Mr. Burns? I suspect you will see, I can't promise you it, there will be at the next council meeting, because I asked the manager to put um, to connect with these folks and get some sort of budget proposal? So that we can approve the studies and get going on those at the next meeting. We have, the city is actively applying for Vermont Emergency Management Funds. These folks are helping us narrow the list of flood mitigation projects. And there's ninety million dollars available in Vermont Emergency Management Funds, and we're going to be actively applying, and I'm just off the cuff a little bit here. Roughly six to ten projects that we're going to, not including specific buyouts, but si- six to ten projects that are included in the list that these folks have. So you'll see that, what I encourage you to do is just watch the agenda and and you'll see it. But please do.
Very, very interested and very hopeful that we'll get past difficult and complicated and will actually start to do some.
We're, we're past difficult and complicated, we're, we're determined, Mr. Mr. Burns, I promise you. Yes, Councilor Stockwell.
Why use ARPA funding if it's possible to do a grant-funded for the hy- hydrology study?
I'd rather, I want to get going, you know, I I mean, a grant is going to be, even if we did Vermont Emergency Management, they'd probably fund it. It's a pretty, pretty smart way to go. But I, I mean, I for one am just really anxious to understand specifically a lot more about our storm system and what's happening with that, as well as all of these things that they talk about. And I think the sooner we have that information, the better. You know, you heard them talk about a complete study could be as much as a twelve months off. I mean, we'll get some information as we go along, we'll get good valuable information. But a complete, a complete study is twelve mi- and I just don't want to make that twelve, fourteen, or, that's all. I'm not saying it's the wrong idea, but I don't, other than Vermont Emergency Management, I'm not aware of a specific grant that could be available for this and.
Not immediate.
I wish we had, I wish, I was a member of the council a year ago. I wish these folks had been here a year ago and we had said, yes, we'd have that study now. Yes.
Very, very quickly, if we were to approve that funding out of ARPA in the interest of moving things quickly, does your firm have the capacity to start something this fall? You mentioned you'd like, I know, I know. This is partly why I'm asking, right? Because if we're going to move as quickly as possible, or do you know of someone else who has the capacity? Because you mentioned you'd like to do it when the leaves are down, coming into winter.
I guess I have to sort of look, do a little more planning and come here looking for work.
Okay.
Just came up, yeah, so something we can, we could look at.
That may help us determine the funding if, if, if there's no one who can do it until the funding comes through.
That's why I asked them to.
Yeah.
Connect with the manager and see what they can do. But I think the sooner we get started, the better. I can take you on a great walk through the Potash Brook as it comes from the city into the town.
Sounds great.
Show you some really, show you Tiger Falls, show, show you all the great sights. Awesome. Anything else, folks? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, council, we are at item 8B on the agenda. This is the buyouts update. And sir, if you want to take a closer seat, that's fine, because I know you're interested in this part of the meeting. Mr. Manager, it's all yours.
Thanks, Mayor. So, council, you had a PowerPoint in your packet, a follow-up from the meeting on the 23rd, where Council Spalding had asked for an update of where we were, what the landscape was on the buyouts. So, this first batch, this is mostly pictures in this presentation. These are buyouts, showing areas where buyouts are underway. So, this first slide here is a visual of the north end, and the, the green property there is a FEMA buyout that has been submitted to VEM. This is a, we think, has great mitigation value to the city, is being right along the river, and I think meets a lot of the, I think, a lot of the, the things that the river folks just talked to us about, of being adjacent to the river, giving the river some, some room to move. So, that is a, we think, a valuable mitigation site. The yellow boxes here are sort of an in-between phase. We've, you know, we've talked about broadly needing to do both mitigation and redevelopment on the north end. So, these are properties that have potential non-FEMA buyout options down, down the road, right? So, we've talked a lot about the cluster on Second Street. Those folks have been offered purchase options. There's another cluster on Third Street that have also been approached. And then there's, there's areas here that could be both floodplain restoration along North Main or also redevelopment potential. But this is, this gives you a, a visual of where that core north end impacted area and where, where it is and where the buyouts currently, currently sit. The inset there from Scampini Square, Vine Street, so this is a closer look at it. The green blocks are all buyouts that are also underway. The red, the two red ones are, are not currently in an applica, they haven't been offered an application because they are not clustered along the river. So, just to step back a little bit, when we started moving through the buyout process a little bit more in-depth in, in February, we had gotten advice on the city staff level to focus on clusters along the river. And so, that's, that's what we did. And as we've gone through that process, some of these clusters have grown. So, for example, in this particular slide, if you go back to the February 27th presentation, you'll see that the, the green block there in Scampini Vine Street was smaller, and that's because two of the properties on Scampini decided to, to apply for buyout. So, that, because it expanded the cluster we were looking at, we extended an application to, to that property owner. The red area, I'm sure everyone saw the story about this family on BT Digger. They're, you know, the unfortunate piece is that there, there appears to be less mitigation value there to the city because it's unfortunately not clustered. There's a property between them and the river. There's a property between them and the rest of the cluster. So, from a strictly, from a strict standpoint of looking at it as mitigation value to the city, we believe there wasn't any mitigation value to the city. That doesn't mean that we don't agree with those homeowners, that they're in untenable situations. But it also could be that a flood-resilient home could be built there in the future, right? So, that's, that's the very difficult calculus we're making on a lot of these buyout applications. And, and we know that it's hard, and it's, we know that it's people, these boxes aren't boxes, there are people involved in this. But that's the calculus we're making from a city's interest perspective, which I, I acknowledge may not be in the, in the residents' interest. So, this is just one example where it's very clear, and you can, you can visualize it. This one, so there's more colors on this slide, and I'm afraid this one is actually probably going to have more purple the next time we look at this. But here we have three colors. Again, the green are buyouts that we're pursuing, and we've sent applications to those owners to complete. The red are buyouts that are currently not being pursued under FEMA. And then the purple are new buyout intakes after this July's flood. So, you can see the green areas are along the Brook, the Gunners Brook mitigation, the former flood mitigation area that we're looking to expand. I'm sorry, Harrington. Yes, I'm sorry. And then the, the one on Dick's Place is one that we see as, it is a single lot, but it, it's a little bit bigger. And then we think that there's a potential for some mitigation value on that one as well. So, that one is proceeding. You can see that, you know, on Brook Street, on the 103 Brook Street and 105 Brook Street, just from a layman's perspective, you know, and I haven't talked even to Brian yet about this, Brian Baker, but those, those may have some mitigation value. And, and that's going to be, you know, in a way, you know, we have a year to make that decision. We have some time to decide that, because these are intakes that happened after this year's flood. But I, I think that there's a, there could be a, a reason to see those turning into green boxes as we move into the assessment of, of more intakes that come as a result of this year's event.
That would be the red adjacent to the purple.
That would be, no, I think that's the purple. That's purple 103 right here on the screen here. So, the 103 and one, I think that's 105, I believe. So, I, my, that, again, very layman's perspective, but I believe those, that's a big cluster. And then I have, I have messages from more people on Brook Street, so I'm afraid this list will keep growing. And so, there may be a future flood mitigation expansion area there. Those people didn't do intakes last year. They all got hit again this year, and, and it's difficult conversations. They, they, you know, they're ready to, to give up, and it's unfortunate. But there does appear to be mitigation value to the city as we move forward, which could complement the mitigation that we're looking to expand further down on Harrington, so.
So, on an earlier A and R report, they recommended some houses on Brook Street, which were closer to North Main Street. And I assume it's those houses that are, because one of them is like, the Brook is here and their houses, the porch is really over the Brook. And then the Brook makes a sharp turn, which is heavily channelized, and that got us, it's a low bridge. I have to assume that the houses there are often hit.
It may be, but I don't believe they've been, they haven't been intakes yet. These are, these are the only intakes thus far from both last, last July and this July's events. So, there, there may be more. And you can see there's some, this is, again, it's less evident here than the Vine Scampini, but you can see a couple of isolated red and purple squares that, again, don't have mitigation value to the city as a whole, as, as individual lots. The value starts to come in when there's clusters, because that's, that becomes places where water can rest and, and save houses downstream, so. So, then this is the last, this is the next area, River Street, Granite Street area. So, this, this is actually one of the areas that our guests highlighted earlier today. This is the, the, one side of the bank here is the Desaro property. So, that would be restoring it to perhaps what the, the pictures that they showed us today, something looking more like that. And then across the street, the, the houses clustered on, on River Street as well. There's one property owner there who has not sought a, a buyout, but the, all the other neighbors in that section have. So, we think that there's, we do think there's mitigation value of having both sides of the river with some, some more room there. At the purple, we have another 2024 intake here, again, just off the cuff. That looks like a real good area to, to restore some floodplain. But we have to do, you know, further analysis. I think, I, I know that it's difficult for, for the residents who are in the, sort of caught in this waiting game, but I, I think one of the values we've learned is that people don't make this decision right away. It's a difficult, life-altering decision for many people. And so, we may not know the full, full potential list of buyouts for some time. So, it, it could very well be that other property owners adjacent to these owners come on board. But just looking at it like this, that, that purple property right there could, could turn to a green because of its location.
There's questions?
Yes.
So, is that purple property next door to the park on?
It is. That's why, that's one of the reasons we think that it's particularly valuable as, as mitigation, because it would connect to an existing sort of green space and, and could reconfigure that. It's adjacent to property the city already owns, so it could really.
And would we be looking at potentially moving that park to help with flood mitigation, to maybe connect more of that river together, or?
I think it's too early to tell. One of the things that could happen is, is maybe it could, because that park is a little bit elevated as well, so maybe the whole area could be lowered. It's possible to have playgrounds on FEMA buyout lands. There are just a few restrictions on it. But, so I think it's certainly possible. I think that's, that's why, in my eyes, as, again, as a layperson, that property appears to have high mitigation value because of its location along the river, because it's adjacent to existing city property. So, that, you're right, Council Dearing, that, you know, really that could turn into a much broader swath of land that becomes flood mitigation down the road.
When you notice when driving down river, that particular business, all of the sand and stuff is washed up among all of those vehicles and completely buried them. So, I think that would be a great project.
Yeah.
And to the one homeowner who hasn't decided to pursue a buyout so far, is there, you know, the rest of these buyouts move forward, they get approved, and then a year and a half from now, they decide, yeah, no, I probably could take a buyout. Would they need another qualifying event? Is there a time limit?
I believe one of the things that changes, and I, I know there's rounds of HMGP funding on cycles. What, what would drastically alter for them is the offer they're going to be able to get on the house. So, my understanding from VEM, and maybe, and if anyone in the audience knows, they can correct me, but right now, people who get in within this year's application are eligible for the fair market value the day before the event. If you do not get in under this round, you are eligible for fair market value at the time of the buyout. So, they would lose basically that, whatever that lost home value in terms of an offer that they would get.
And so, is that also true then for, if the council were to say like, no, Nicholas, you're wrong, we're going to buy out that small red box? Is that also true because it's been so long that they would then?
It, it's, they would have, they would, if, if the council went that way, they'd get an application tomorrow, and they would have to turn that in. We would turn that around to, to VEM and FEMA. My understanding is that FEMA still has to decide there's a benefit cost to it as, as part of this as well. So, that, that one in particular may be difficult, because as you can see, it's not technically in a floodplain.
Yeah, I was just thinking that because it was on the screen.
Exactly. But there's, it, it's not an automatic, as I, as I understand the process. Yeah. These are landslide buyouts. So, this is the two, these are the homes Pike Street and Oswald Street. These were approved as well by the council. These are moving forward. There was an isolated home here as well on Howard Street that, that has not been, and this was not, the Howard Street home was not a landslide, just for clarification. It was just a, a, a regular buyout intake. But the, the two landslide here, the three landslide homes here are captured in this neighborhood. Portland Street is, also was approved for buyout. That buyout is underway. The Courier Street landslide was also approved for buyout, and that is underway as well. So, then I just wanted to show you the additional bio applicants or intakes that we've received. So, this will show you the, the areas of the city where we have not moved forward with particular applications. These, this is North Main Street Maple area. This is my friend Gordon's house is one of these listed here. We had a chat about this today. The Navy home is just, I thought it would be flagged, is one that was on a buyout intake, but this homeowner decided, asked to be removed because they, they received some assistance from Berry Up, actually, and they are, they decided to stay. So, that's, I think, a, a success story right there. They, they are no longer under consideration. This is Brooklyn Street area, and you may ask, well, these are clustered, yes, but not, not along the river. There's, there's structures across the street from these homes. So, we believe there's, there's perhaps not the same mitigation value as, as other parts of the city that we are pursuing. This is Washington Street. Again, we think minimal mitigation value. You can see there, the structures are not in the floodplain as well, so this would probably be a challenge with FEMA anyhow.
It's both sides of 302?
Yes, correct. This is Elmore Street. Again, this is a, this is along the river. It's sort of, the floodplain here is a little bit strange. This hasn't been advanced at this point. This, this is a little bit larger plot, lot than normal, but it's, it hasn't been advanced as a, as an application by the city. This was also a very late comer to the game. Doesn't mean it's not valuable, but just, just sharing the intakes we have.
And it's not a building? It's just?
It is a building, yes. It's a, it's a rental unit.
Multi-family.
Multi-family, yeah. Hill Street, this is an isolated one, again, not in the floodplain. Not pursued. And Courier Park, this home is adjacent to Culvert. And again, it's had damage, but the, the measure for us is mitigation value to the city, which, which is minimal, if any, we believe. This is a new intake this year. This is on Prospect Street, 119. Not near the floodplain. And again, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not saying not near the floodplain to mini, to minimize what these folks are going through. I have no doubt that they've been impacted. It's just, it, it has a perhaps limited FEMA value, FEMA benefit cost threshold, and, and just mitigation value to the city may be limited, so.
Do you know what the damage to that property was for flooding on Prospect?
Um, not off the top of my head. I spoke, I've, have emailed with the, with the homeowner. I think it's, it's just water in the, in the home from runoff, is my understanding. This is one in the downtown, the core downtown. This is 171. My, you know, I don't want to get too much into the intent. My, you know, this was what, property owner that never confirmed their interest in a buyout. So, I don't know if this is someone who, you know, had a, you know, saw what happened and threw their hands up and said, I got to go, and did an intake, and then, you know, got some help. So, I, I, I don't know what happened here. This, this, the property owner here never confirmed their interest, and, and in any case, it wouldn't have been pursued by the city, is my, or at least it wouldn't have been recommended by the city to be pursued.
Never confirmed their interest?
Yeah, so what we did is, we were taking intakes for several months after the flood. And what we did before we went public with these maps and, you know, because it's very personal showing, you know, someone's property. We reached out to everybody on these, on these, on the intake list. VEM had started the process. They turned it over to us. And before the February presentation that we did with our initial strategy for buyouts, I've reached out to everybody, said, hey, you're on this intake list. Are you still interested in a buyout? And this, this property owner was one that never confirmed that. Everybody else said, yes, we're interested, we're considering it. It's, you know, we want to, could still be considered, but this one was one that didn't respond. So, I, I don't know, I don't know what their intentions were, but in any case, it, it wouldn't have been one that we recommended to pursue.
So, for all you know, it could have just been an inquiry saying, gee, I wonder how this works?
Might as well, yeah, exactly. Just throw my name up.
Didn't engage, sure.
Yeah, so, you know, I think if we'd seen, just, just for awareness, I think if, if we had gotten an intake, for example, the, the lone homeowner on River Street, right, if, if I had, if they had been on an intake, but they hadn't confirmed interest because the city believes there's mitigation value there, we probably would have been more aggressive in trying to see where they were. This one, we, we just weren't aggressive because it wasn't, it wasn't one that, on the staff level, we were thinking would. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Council Stockwell, do you have a question?
So, is there, do we know anything about the timeline for the buyouts that are underway? Do we have any sense of like, yep, we're going to feel that impact next year on grand list, or we have no idea?
Unfortunately, it's more of the latter. We've gotten, I've gotten.
To be clear, we've likely already felt the impact on the grand list, so we don't. So we don't have to wait a year to feel that because we've abated tons of taxes and so that's happening now.
Yes, I understand.
In terms of the, like, here's your check, that can be a couple of years.
Yeah, and we, just so you know, the process, so we've um, V M has been terrific throughout all of this. Um, we have, uh, I've mentioned to the council before, but we have an M O U with them that they they manage the process for us, which is very, very helpful. All all we do um is we communicate with the residents. We we make recommendations about which ones to proceed with. Um, and then we um, we mail the application materials to those property owners. Uh, those property owners have to complete them, the forms have to be notarized. We have notaries here at City Hall that the the clerk will do that for them if they come in. Um, and those applications uh may spend a day or two in City Hall and then I have to sign three or four, three or four places and then they go to V E M. And V E M takes it from there, which is a a huge help uh to us. Um, from V E M, they go to FEMA. Um, the the update we got from V E M is that it's one of those updates where like, there is no update. Um, they're still, you know, I think FEMA has hired some people and assigned some people to help with these buyouts. Um, but unfortunately, there's no, there's no set timeframe for when they'll happen. Not all of the property owners that um we've uh invited to send us the application materials have returned them. I think there's at this point, three or four that haven't. Um, and so we've, we've been reaching out to them over the last uh couple of weeks to remind them that there's a deadline coming up. Um, and uh, so we, you know, we'll we'll take it from there. I think the the people who got their applications in sooner are likely to get answers faster. Um, but it it, we have, we don't have like a a timeframe from from V E M or FEMA at this point.
Oh, sorry. Councillor Wazak?
The the list that you sent Amanda and I was, is that representative of all the green?
Uh, yes.
So that, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
So for the, I understand the reasoning behind not um pursuing a buyout for people who um, for homeowners, property owners who are not going to be a part of a flood mitigation plan. But what happens to those people? Because they are in a position where they can't really sell their house and they have nowhere to go. Um, and so I just wonder what what happens to them? We just say, okay, thanks for living here and now you have to file bankruptcy and good luck?
I, unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, perhaps.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's, there's some places where the city could, here on the north end in particular, where there's opportunities to do non FEMA buyouts. And and those are um, tho- those are still not easy because the city has to identify the funding to do those buyouts. The city, and not just to do the buyouts, but to do the demolition and the site prep and um turn them over to a developer. Um, so even even doing a non FEMA buyout is is not uh an easy prospect for for the city anyway. And it may not be an ideal solution for the homeowners. Uh, because, you know, we're we're in this uh position where um, you know, we we may not be able to offer those people what their fair mar- we may not be able to offer what FEMA would offer them in a buyout because the city on top of a buyout cost would have demolition cost. That's something FEMA would do in a buyout, right? In a, in a buyout, we just, we show up uh to accept a deed at closing is all we do now. Um, but in this non FEMA buyout situation, we have to start thinking about demolition. Just to give you reference, the demo, the city paid for the demolition on Portland Street because that was a, an emergency uh mitigating factor that we got approved under FEMA. I believe that cost approximately two hundred thousand dollars, right? So if you're looking at, because that, it's it's an older home, it's got asbestos, it's gotta be watered down as you take it down. Um, it's gotta be specially disposed of. So, you know, not saying that they're all gonna cost two hundred thousand dollars, but if you look at the city possibly having to demolition on on these types of properties, we're talking big numbers. The city's cost won't be the buyout, it'll be the site prep. Um, so these can't all happen overnight either because there just isn't the financial um capacity to do so. But um, so so for some people, this is an option. Um, and it may be their only way out. Um, and for others, unfortunately, that it's it's not an easy road. Um, as I've, and I, and we've talked about it on the council that, you know, I think from the city staff's perspective, um, if there wasn't the limitation on perpetual green space, there's no reason to keep somebody in the house that that keeps flooding. Um, but that that is a real barrier to to how we have to look at them.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hall?
Mr. Hall again.
Mr. Hall, could you come to the microphone because folks have said they can't?
Wash your head.
I've sat too long already. Can you hear me okay now?
Yep, you can sit if you'd like.
Uh, it's worse. Uh, number nineteen, number twenty-one, twenty-three and twenty-five, are the city gonna buy them out?
Yes, in fact, I, yes.
I can save you the cost of demolition of them and make a deal with you. Because if you heard a company named Messier House Moving, it's in Berlin, those, they can be taken down to thirteen, six or twelve six. And then removed out of there in one big shot, right up the interstate and gone. And I can have him hold those sweet houses.
Yeah.
If you wanted to buy them out. I don't know if Betty DeForge is selling hers, but I think, I've heard the one down below me, twenty-three and twenty-five has already been sold to the state of Vermont.
So no one's bought anything yet um on Vine Street?
On our property, it was held, cause I've been keeping in touch with the windmill taxes, sellouts, buyouts and everything. And I stayed in the garage by putting a new roof on it, four foot up, a few years ago, because it was gonna collapse if I didn't.
Right.
And uh, I would love to tear those places down quick, get them out of there so it'd save you a city demolition cost.
I I I appreciate that. I think that um, from my understanding of this process is that it's it's a FEMA process soup to nuts. So they they handle the demolition, they handle the site prep. What they turn over to the city is a, is a, is a space with a deed. Um, so I I will certainly talk to our V E M partners about that. But the the city's role, and this isn't, this isn't a deflection, right? The city's role is to say, yes, this this property is compelling for buyout, so please complete this application. And then assuming it goes through the process, the city's next step is, after it's approved, is to show up at the closing and to accept a deed, right? We don't, we don't set the prices for the buyout. We don't manage the uh demolition, we don't manage, they they turn us over a a completed property, yeah.
Well, let me tell you a little bit about FEMA. When I bought that house, I had to get flood insurance that day to finish it, close it to eight oh two credit union. The first flood, I had flood insurance. The furnace alone cost me twenty-five hundred bucks I put in there. I replaced every copper pipe in that house because it was a foreclosure, okay? FEMA wrote me a check for a hundred dollars. When they came down the second year, I said, if you offer me a hundred dollars, you can get off my land, don't ever come back again. And that was Irene. And I've already told you the rest story, building up, helping save people that were dying and everything else that would have gone through that flood down from Woodstock all the way through. And those people vote for me for a governor, I guarantee it for what I did and the people I've talked around the city. Because I'm willing to stand my ground. That house that we owned, the boards are that wide, it can be run through a planer and build another house with it. Guy Corrington does it, he's a good friend of mine, he's got the planer. That's why I want that house in the end and the one next to it. And I don't know about Betty's house, because her daughter's gonna get it. But I want those in the buyout, I wanna move them up to a high piece of land out in Orange and I wanna build a veterans place for veterans. But I also want my daughter to have her hundred thousand out of that place. It's not booked at high in your taxes. But she, we've innovated that house after my wife and I got a divorce. My wife got a consensual divorce, I've never signed off the property because of the floods. So I am fighting for my daughter and my ex-wife. Money that I get from that product, project's going to them so she can build a new house in Virginia. She's moving out of this area because of everything else. I thank you very much for what you did this afternoon in the playground after we had our conversation. But I got pictures, over seventeen kids were in that playground tonight before I came to this meeting, that's why I was late. And yes, sir, I was promised two years ago that that fence was gonna be changed. It's dangerous the way it is and I can show you in a picture, the bar's hanging down, the fence is backed in there, it's been that way two years now. Kids have climbed on that fence and got tore open. And I've mentioned these, I've gone out there, my daughter's gone out there and said, get off the fence or the piece of pipe that was laying down, there was cement on it sideways, they were jumping on it when they were trying to do basketball hoops. That fence is dangerous. It can go along the river and be used down there and spray painted. But we need to get in there with bucket loader, and I'm dead serious, and get that mud out of there and all that stuff and then just put sodas down if you had to, make it safer for these kids. We have them all over the city come to that area and that's God's honest truth. You can spend a day down there and you can see it, especially the weekends. And I, before I left, I warned these people, do not go underneath that fancy playground we got there because it's got that much mud and your kids are gonna get sick. But thank you for what you did for me today, Nick, I appreciate it very much. And that's the end of that story, but that way I could save you demolition of three buildings if Betty DeForge decides to let hers go and I can get Messier moving at my expense, move those three buildings right out to Berlin, right out of the way, quick. Then you can get in there and do what you want with a point eleven acres I own and whatever the other ones were. That's just a suggestion to you. Because I'll run every board through a planer, they've already been gutted, four foot up. We had forty-one inches of water the last time I was in that house, I saved two dogs, electrician, it never went off. Oh, God almighty, saved my life. Forty-one inches of water inside the house, when I moved two dogs up to the second floor and locked the door so they couldn't get out, I reached their dog food and I couldn't even save that. I can now step off the porch like this, water was this level, power was still on in my house. And I walked the four or five feet after I tied this bayliner boat with an eighty-five horsepower motor to the front porch because I already watched all the kayaks, all the base, uh, my daughter was, just a second. My daughter was head of troop seven one seven, Boy Scouts. She was stuck up in Eden, I had no idea where she was. I was staying at the Pierre Motel on the second floor. I saw the rain, I saw this flood coming in my mind, because I watch that river constantly, ever since the first flood. And I couldn't get a hold of her, I had no idea where, because she was out of service. But I watched all the canoes, I watched the Boy Scout stuff that was in the first floor. We threw it across the road, big piles of it. Thank goodness the Baptist church, which are back in the same area, Southern Baptist.
Mr. Hall, Mr. Hall, you're drifting a bit on me again, buddy.
But I just wanna finish this.
Okay.
They came in and helped us empty those three houses. And my neighbor just below me was handicapped, he kept falling down, I'd help him pick up. And uh, we cut them all to four foot. We had fifty-one inches in the backyard on the garage, mark is still on the back. And I don't wanna go through it again.
Understood.
I'm glad I saved my own life and God was watching over me because I should have been laid out flat electrocuted, but it didn't happen. That's my last statement, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Uh, Amy Galford.
Uh, Amy, did you have a question?
I do. So on the pink mapping there, um, I think those are the FEMA flood maps and there's two different zones. The broad pink is the one percent or hundred year floodplain and then the hatched area is the floodway, is that correct?
Yep.
So to me, the floodway is the higher risk area, that's even higher than one percent and that's basically where the river is going to be during a flood. Um, so, but I didn't see that mentioned and it doesn't look like that's been used as a criterion for picking who gets a buyout and who doesn't. So those two red houses are in the hatched area there. And as I've said before, they are lower in elevation than the Berlin Street Bridge. That's why the water goes over there is, um, before the Berlin Street Bridge is is clogged or overflowing or when it does, the water's flowing into those. And the other criteria there is how close properties are to the river. Um, so everyone should have a visual of the distance of those two properties from the river. And then if you back up to the numbered streets, the numbered streets, and certainly, we know the the floodplain maps are um, you know, wildly out of date. But um, the numbered streets are flooding because of the debris clogs primarily. They're not in the floodway for the immediate water um hitting them. And a lot of those in the numbered streets, the the east side of the numbered streets, not the West Second shown there, but the East Second Street and those cluster, those are not adjacent to the river. So I think as a fairness thing, just sticking up for my neighbors on on Berlin Street there, it's really hard for me to see the fairness when um, those are, those are houses that have flooded three or four times now and they are lower than the bridge. Um, they are close to that buyout cluster and um, I just, I I don't see what the fair market value of those houses is gonna be from here on. Um, the one, I can't tell if it's included in that red square or not, but there's a house, it's been, I think it's not, but there's a house there that's flooded repeatedly, it's been on the market for a year and it hasn't sold. And almost anything is selling fast these days. So I'm just having a little trouble reconciling the the numbered streets on the first slide versus here. And when there are commercial properties off Granite Street, where part of the property is again, not in the floodway and the commercial property is is getting a full buyout and the residential property here is not.
Yeah, I mean.
And I guess just just one last thing about that is I don't know if there's a difference between the floodway and the the one percent uh flood chance in terms of what you can rebuild. You were talking about this, the the red block there, potentially floodproofing and building it. Is that actually true that somebody could be allowed to rebuild in that area?
You can mitigate it, elevate it. Um, so yeah, I mean, Amy, you're right, it's 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 gut wrenching decisions, they're difficult. Um, as I said, all those boxes are, they're not boxes, they're people. Um, you know, the 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 standard we've had to look at is mitigation value to the city and we believe that these represent the mitigation value to the city. Um, so that's, you know, that's, I'm not saying that they're not deserving of a buyout under normal circumstances, but we also say we're in a housing crisis and if there's a parcel that can be saved, that's the, you know, that's that's where we've erred on the side of of saving. So um, again, I I don't disagree that they're difficult. Um, and that, you know, if if there wasn't that that standard of no further development, I think it would be uh no brainers. Yes.
Councillor Wazak actually was. So on that, the first thing I wrote down when we got to buyouts is I wanna approve Nick's buyout. Um, so I under, so there you, there are no normal circumstances under which we would pursue a buyout. Um, we're pursuing these buyouts in the first place because we're having not, it's not going to be abnormal in the future unfortunately, but because we're in unprecedented times here. And on the housing crisis thing, like Amy just said, there's a house that's not selling because it floods. And like, it's not, Nick's family is not living in a housing unit that is, in my opinion, a real housing unit. Because yeah, there's a structure there, but it's not safe to live in under the current environmental circumstances that that neighborhood is experiencing. So I mean, like, Nick doesn't want to be there, no one else is going to want to buy that house as is. The elevation process is going to take forever and if we know that the water is flowing there from the Berlin Street Bridge, I don't see how it doesn't provide at least some space for water to go to.
Uh, it 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 may, it very well may. I mean, we we believe that the the larger block of space is is a better place to catch water. It's, it has more geographic space um to do so. Um, so I, you know, like, I I acknowledge it's 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 difficult. Um, you know, the 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 difference is that that house may not be selling now, but if it's bought out, it's not selling ever. Uh, and there will never be a a property on it. Um, so, you know, it it's certainly, it's absolutely the council's decision. I mean, our our calculus is that um, we just don't think it has the value and we have to draw difficult lines um all the time. Um, so that that's where we landed. But if if the council's will is different, I mean, they'll get an application tomorrow.
I think, I think my one of seven is I think they should.
Linda, you've had your hand up for a while, I apologize.
Aren't I patient? Um, so I thought we were looking at um city buyouts because we started the, with the north and where my property is. But that has been denied a FEMA buyout and it's now in the running for a city buyout. Um, but I don't know how much it's worth or I don't know any of that stuff, so I'm gonna find out. But my neighbors were also in the same cluster for a city buyout and they understood that um, two hundred something thousand dollars was being offered for their house. But they had to tear it down themselves, pay for the teardown, which was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Does that make any sense?
Uh, it's certainly not anything the city's communicated to them. So I don't know where people are hearing that, but it's, you know, the city hasn't talked to anybody about any prices for any homes. Talked to anybody about any prices for any homes. Um, so. We, I I have talked to folks who received the options. Um, if they have, what I advise them to do is to. Um, you know, have a an attorney look at it. Um, and if they're, you know, if they're interested, then we deploy the the assessors to start moving through the process, but. I just want to be very absolutely clear. The city has not talked to any anybody who's got an option about.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, and so. In our case, um, we're a land trust property. The only value of that property to us is if we live in it. Um, if we don't live in it, there's no value to us if we sell it. So in that case, if the city's gonna pay two hundred thousand dollars to have our home torn down. Couldn't we, the city pay that to have our home mitigated? I know you want to build an apartment building there, but. You know, an apartment building for six people and you're and you're displacing six families. So it doesn't even make sense. Um, so if if we could use the teardown money for mitigation money. Um. Maybe that would make sense. We're not next to the river.
It 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 ma- maybe it does. I mean, I think that uh they don't all cost two hundred thousand dollars. That was an example of of what it may be. Um, so the 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 goal is to, you know, what we've, when we talked about this in February. And in that particular cluster. Um, was that, you know, we looked at the footprint of the building uh just north of, just uh above it. Um, that it could replace the um, it could replace the um. The the units that are on that property now. So it could be a net gain of units. Um, the other piece is that, you know, we've talked about these development efforts as not being solely city money. Um, so as we know that there's been congressionally directed spending applications made um to Congress to help support these projects. Uh, as well. So these, you know, we're not talking specifically city dollars that would be coming through. Um, to to do this project. It can't be just city dollars to do these projects. Um, so. Lots of variables, uh Linda, but uh I think the the goal, I think as as we presented it back uh in February was. Net new units on on places that were where buyouts um occur, which was the case in the cluster that that you're located in.
There's, there's four properties, five families, and you're gonna build six units. So there's five families being displaced to build si- a six unit apartment building.
No, I mean Linda, what we what we talked about.
That's what you told me.
No, there 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 could be, there could be two, possibly two buildings of that size built on that property. Uh, I mean, it's all hypothetical anyway. I mean, we've, we've looked at the, we've looked at the footprint of that um of that cluster. Um, and. We think based on the footprint of the building just above it, that if something like that were matched, it could be. I believe that building has six units. It could be two of those. So it could be double that. Um. In any case, this is all, it it's all hypothetical. Um, but the goal would be, I think the goal should be. To have net growth of units in any place where um where um buyouts have to occur.
Take your pick. You got a few.
I just want to say, I think it's really also important that we're building back in a flood resilient way. And not just putting more units online, Linda. I think that.
No, I know. And I want my house to be flood resilient and I want to live in it. But I don't have the money to invest. Two hundred thousand dollars in my house. But it seems like someone's willing to invest. Two hundred thousand dollars in tearing it down. You know, it's a, it's a disturbance. And that's what the neighbors feel. They don't really want, no one was, nobody had their house on the market. And those four, those four houses, no one had the house, their house, no one was trying to get out of there.
Yeah, well Linda, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but that is not. What you're saying makes perfect sense, but it simply isn't a program available to the city. City doesn't have, so the FEMA program. That allows uh for the removal. Of a home. Unfortunately, the FEMA program doesn't allow for. Flood mitigation, for raising the home or or doing some mitigation efforts. And that's simply not. I mean, it's not something that the city could undertake. It's not something we have the budget for.
Right. And your budget is what I just heard tonight was that FEMA pays fair market value a day before, but you won't. So I was denied the FEMA. Which might have been a little more money. And now. You're gonna set the price for my house. There's no negotiation. Right, Nick?
I mean, I I don't know how else to explain it, Linda, but there's, the the process is not easy. It's it's not a way out. It it as I've explained it. Uh, when I've talked about it publicly, it pits homeowners against the municipality. And I think that's what you're describing. And I, you know, I I I I agree with what's been said that it's it's uh. It's difficult for the homeowner. It's difficult for the city. The homeowners, for many people, their home is their largest personal asset. For the city, uh, properties are a source of revenue. And so um at the city, we have the, you know, the city staff has the 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 task of trying to make recommendations based on the best interest of the city. Uh, and we understand, I understand that sometimes the best interest of the city is not the best interest of an individual resident. And that's very difficult. Um, but that's exactly what what you're running up against. I I wish it wasn't like that, but.
Yeah, and I think it could be not like that. You could say to these four. Four um properties, let's help you get back on your feet.
Counselor Guston.
I would like to learn a little bit about how the funding that the state approved for elevation. Is being deployed relative especially to some of those red boxes that you had indicated.
Yeah, I think that those are really good candidates for it. What we're doing now, what we've done is try to get um. Intakes for that as well, so that we know. The full range of of homeowners that are um that are interested in that. Um, we've, um, you know, looking at the subs- the 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 substantial damage homes, looking at those homes that are. Um, um, in those red boxes, as you mentioned, Counselor Guston. So what we're trying to gather is the the universe. Um, of people who may be interested in that so that then. Um, you know, those funds can be deployed in 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 a way that is, at least people know it's accessible and available. Uh, and then decisions can be made by by the council about where the the best, um, where where the best investments are for that, for that funding. Now that funding, um, it was three point five million statewide. It'll, uh, as we understand, it'll be seven hundred thousand dollars for Berry City. That may cover. Two or three. So um, they. You know, and as at last, uh, at last count, we had, I believe, nine. Uh, really good candidates, interested candidates for it. So that's gonna leave, um, again. Six or more um. Property owners who, for whom that will not be an option.
Vermont Emergency Management said that that's only one pot of money that.
I didn't recognize you, Linda. Counselor Stockwell.
Sorry, Linda. I'm sure we'll come back to you.
I know where I stand.
I was wondering if we could use the EPA Community Change Grant to. Consider city buyouts for some of these properties. And rebuild them better, but much better. Rebuild them as energy efficient, energy efficient places with improved infrastructure. Is that a possibility?
Um, I. In this round?
Yeah.
No.
For the EPA grant?
No, not even close. I mean, there just isn't the time. We're struggling to get the grant, the projects that have been identified. We're struggling to get that grant completed as the manager had said for technical review tomorrow. So to change course now, um, in this round, not saying we couldn't do it in the future. It just, it it's just not practically possible.
Does the money that's po- that's available through V E M, is that flexible money so that you could pay people? What their property is worth? Or more?
Um, for buyouts.
For city, for city buyouts.
For city buyouts, um.
I mean, can you use it even for city buyouts?
So it's all FEMA pass through. So FEMA pass through means that it still has FEMA rules of perpetual green space, unfortunately.
If someone wanted to submit submit an application through the city, they can do that. They could, they could submit their own application. Uh, we've talked about that. Several times in previous meetings. However. Um, the city would have to be, the city is ultimately the applicant. And the city would have to be paid. The city would be responsible for administering the grant and. Obviously, there'd be a cost to the homeowner, but we've talked about that several times at. Council meetings that if anyone, if an individual wants to submit a V E M grant through the city, they can do that.
For for elevations and such. I think buyouts still require, just for clarification, buyouts require. Um, city sign off, which again, it's it's the council's decision. Um, but um. The, you know, an elevation, we told B E M, V E M for the Berry Day that. The city was supportive of any and all sort of um. Elevation type projects, um, that we would be okay with those. Frankly, even in the clusters, you know, I think it's not. Really, it's it's somebody's home, right? So if they, if they want to elevate it, even if it. Um. Eliminate a cluster for development, that's somebody's right, right? It's their property. Um. But the, just for clarification, the the buyouts would still require city signature, which again, would require ultimately council approval.
The other thing is I want to go back to Counselor Wazizak's suggestion about the buyouts that are in the red block. And suggest that we consider giving those folks buyouts.
I would be a hard no. This is not. This is a program designed to mitigate for the city. You know. If you don't listen to these stories and you're not heartbroken, then you're not human and you shouldn't be sitting on the council. I mean, I feel that way. But if we start messing with the process. That slope is gonna turn so slippery, so fast. And what is supposed to be a mitigation program will turn into a popularity contest. We need to listen to the manager. You know, I know Nick and his family. They're wonderful people. I'd love to help them. That's not the purpose of the program. The purpose of the program is, as the manager keeps saying, mitigation. Effective mitigation through the city. We listened to these folks tonight. We know damn well, we don't have enough money. To do all of these projects and we can't do them quickly enough. So we have to be very judicious about the way we go about things.
But we also don't know the mitigation value of those properties, especially if they're connected to the green block.
Based upon the location of the homes, I can't sit here and and argue with or. Question anything the manager's telling me. Everything that he's telling me makes perfect sense. And they've made decisions based on a certain set of criteria. And if I, if I saw them straying from that criteria, I might feel differently. But I don't. Uh, so again, it's. You know, these are not easy decisions. But I think we are best served. When we listen to the manager and we don't attempt to influence. We simply allow him to do his job. And I, again, I'm not, I'm not aware. That in terms of the criteria that the entire city staff, not just the manager set forth. This is consistent with that criteria. Linda, I'm gonna come back to you now, Linda, if you had another comment or question. Oh, Linda's still there. Uh, Linda may have jumped off. Counselor Wazizak, you have a.
I was just going to. I almost always defer to Nicholas. Um, but the manager is, the council's job is to provide oversight of the manager. And that doesn't mean that anyone, to your point, did they have anything wrong? Or is, you know, trying to be cold hearted, but they don't always get it right. And I think that our job as elected officials. Is to ensure that we are helping as many people as possible with the programs that are available to us. And. Like Amy pointed out, the thing is in the floodway. The water goes from the Berlin Street Bridge into those houses. Uh, that, and if those houses were not there, that would be space for the water to go to. Um, we don't have to, you know, overcomplicate this. And I don't think that it's any of us. Shirking hard decisions. I mean, the the rest of the hard decisions are like the people in the North End that have been flooded a million times that we're not offering buyouts to right now. This one seems to me like a very uh good candidate for these buyouts. And uh, just to reiterate, Counselor Stockwell, yes, um, the community, I fully agree that it's not possible this time around, but the community change grants are going to be rolling. And I, part of the flood plan that Counselor Guston and I have been working on. A suggestion in there is to have the Washington Street by Tron Holden buyout request, the Brooklyn Street buyout request and the North End clusters. In theory, could be developed into something in the future that could be a community change grant application. Um, so. You know, I I respect your hard no, Mister Mayor, but. If we can get four votes on the thing, I would very much like to do it.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so can you explain to me because the North End slide is the only one. With city buyouts. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so you just said that city buyouts also come through FEMA?
No, they they wouldn't go through FEMA.
Did you just say that though?
It's, it's, there's nuance missing. The city has to sign off on any FEMA buyouts.
Yeah.
Which is different than a city sponsored by.
Well, you just said something about money that comes, passes through.
Counselor Stockwell had asked about V E M money, but that is, that is, the the ninety million dollars that we're applying for is um FEMA. Passing through the state, which still has FEMA rules.
Okay, so these yellow squares for the North End are not. They're something that the city is looking to buy out. Or they're non FEMA buyouts and they would be um. Re, we would rebuild.
They could be redeveloped. So they're, they're un- unfortunate a little bit in in the middle, right? So there's, there's some properties here that. That could have potential as FEMA mitigation, as as mitigation right along North Main, for example. Um, but many of these, um, you know, certainly the ones a- away from um, from North Main Street. Would, could be better served as redevelopment, right? So this is, this is where um, the city could um, put in um. More housing units. You know, when, when, in February, when we first presented this. We had talked about in this clu- I don't know if you can see the mouse up there, but in this cluster right here. Um, this is the biggest cluster, obviously. Um, and then what we did very rudimentary with with tests was we took the footprint of this building. And we could fit two of them in here, right? So um, you know, it, this building, I believe, has six units. So in theory, right, could be six u- uh, six, two six unit buildings here that could uh fit the character of this neighborhood. Maybe you can't quite fit two six unit buildings there, but maybe you can get a six and a four, two fives. The the, the thing is that we thought there's a way to get more than four houses on that lot, right? Um, the other part of that uh plan was to um, redevelop Wabi Park, which the council approved the um, the plan with Wabi, with Downstreet. At the last meeting. Um, part of that plan would be to relocate Wabi Park. Um, which could, you know, result in, you know, maybe a lot like this or a lot like this becoming a future park, right, right along North Main Street. The reason this is a little bit more in limbo is because this is, this is a bigger focus area. Um, and you know, the 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 potential, I think, would be better informed knowing what the ultimate site control would be, right? So there's. Um, there's could still be additional buyout um intakes that come in over time. There could be buyout intakes that come in after this year's flood. Um, and so these clusters have the potential to grow and giving all of them up um. Without development would just be too difficult, right? It'd be, it's too much lost real estate.
Yes, sir.
I need to know. All I've ever dealt with on that house on Vine Street is the tax department. I never received anything in the mailbox, to my knowledge, unless somebody stole it. About a buyout plan or anything.
Your daughter's been involved. Why don't, let's not talk about this in a public meeting, but I think um, your daughter's been involved on your behalf.
Taxes only.
No, I believe she she's on the, why don't we, why don't you come to my office tomorrow? Because I'd rather not talk about.
We can discuss it then. I just need the form, so I wanna get them filled out. Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Okay. We, we, we are. You've been patient, Gordon. Come on up.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Hard to play on, George Burns or the former pre-governor here. President, we ain't got much. Might get it. All right, uh, thanks Nicholas for your help this afternoon and Mister Mayor. I guess what I'm looking for is. Transparency or more clarity or.
Could you, could you turn that mic a little bit towards you and pull it, and pull it down, just, just.
And introduce yourself.
Pull it down a little bit. Can you hear me now?
Could you tell us who you are?
Gordon George.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, property's four oh eight North Main Street, right beside Dente's Market. My son's married to a Dente girl and I've lived in Berry two, three times before that. But if you live up high and dry, you're, you're not conscientious of floods. I just, I know that Berry's had them, but I never really noticed it. But we bought this old place. Uh, my son was renting from Dente and him and Karen were gonna, I guess the old city records, it's an old duplex. Uh, they were gonna fix up the right side of the house and whatnot. So I said, well, if you, if you want to do that, uh, we'll, we'll buy it. So that's what we did. Unfortunately, after about a year, my son and his wife decided they didn't want to live there. I probably should have taken them up on that myself, but hindsight will tell you the right way. So we bought it in two ten, two oh ten. A year later, it was a Thursday night, May twenty sixth, two eleven was the first flood. Now that wasn't Irene, that was August twenty sixth, three months later, and I thought we're gonna go through it again. The river came that far from going over the Stevens branch. But that was two eleven. And then four years later, July fifteenth, it was a Sunday night. I was home to watch that one. And this is an old, old house, hundred and thirty-five year old house, granite block foundation, that's Berry, eh? With a dark floor, so you don't, you don't keep anything down there. But on that flood, I went down the steps and I mean, it's not like modern concrete walls. Uh, you look around and all four walls, the water just coming through like fire hoses. And I think seven and a half feet cellar, it fills it up within a half an hour. Some pump doesn't keep up. And if it did, the Green Mountain Power will shut it off anyway, the power off, but it wouldn't keep up anyway. Now, so those two floods were in the cellar. I mean, you open the cellar door and bang, it's right there, seven and a half feet. Well, you don't keep anything down there. You just have Dean Preston, he repairs your hot air furnace, puts in a new electric hot water heater and a minimum of new circuit breakers. And you lug the muck out, or the silk, silk's the correct word, because I'll tell you, that's exactly what it is. It doesn't even bond to your old dirt. Once you get an air open, you got your pails down there, you take your hole out and it slides right over you just like nasty stuff. Doesn't even bond to your regular dirt floor. But a hundred and fifty-seven five gallon fails and then in July of two oh fifteen, it was a hundred and seventy-one and a half. I counted them two by two. Anyway, getting on with this, that's when I should have got out of there, but that's hindsight. Well, last year was eight years and last year was devastating. The house is gone. Uh, I don't want to live there anymore. You're living in fear. I said after last year's flood, uh, man, I've had three in twelve years' time, eleven or twelve years. I said, you know, it, it may be another six, another eight, another four years, but it, it's gonna happen again. A year to the day. But I just want some clarity here. I've been to all the meetings, the abatement of the taxes and, uh, proving that the house was substantially damaged and all this stuff. And, uh, I just, I wouldn't dare to live there anymore. So really what I'm looking for is, actually, what brought me here today was this article right here. Uh, which we talked about, Nicholas. I, I did make the meeting three, it'll be three weeks ago, this Thursday up to the auditorium, or they, what do they call it? The alumni building attached to the auditorium. It was Vermont Emergency Management. And I got a letter from the city saying it'd be about elevations and mitigation and repairs that you might want to do to the property. Although the admission was buyouts. So I had my daughter go and she said, well, Dad, it, it doesn't say buyouts are gonna be talked about. I said, well, it, no, but it's Vermont emergency. And we went to the door, it said Berry Residents Day, and it said the other two things, plus it said buyouts. So I'm sure there's probably a lot of people that didn't go because it wasn't specifically said the third thing, buyouts. But I'm not trying to pick on you, Nicholas. But my, uh, what I want is, is direction here, more than anything else. Um, I, I had to get the city fire chief to come. I had to work on him. He was supposed to meet like three weeks, actually two weeks after the flood. And he had my daughter and I waiting there and waiting there. And I said, well, he's not gonna show up, Daniel. I'll go down. Oh, forget it. So uh, this was months and months after I finally got him to come and he came the same too as the two Martins there. The assessors. But, and they know it's badly damaged and FEMA knew it was badly damaged. The man from FEMA said, you know what they'd do with this house where I'm from? I said, no, where are you from? He said, Florida. I said, you're all the way from Florida? Don't have any local? He said, no, but he said they'd tear it down. I said, well. But, so what my thing is, for a whole year, I, you've been living in unsettled times. This weather isn't gonna change overnight. I just, I want out and I want clarity or direction, more than anything else, of, of how to do that. When I did go to the meeting, the only thing the city loses is tax revenue. I said, well, don't the city pay towards it? And they said, no, supposedly seventy-five percent comes from FEMA and twenty-five percent from the state, in theory. And, uh, they say the way it would work is they would compare it with other houses, just like a realtor would and, and, and list in your house for sale and come up with fair market value, you accept it or you don't. I said, oh, okay, well. But this paper is what brought me in and, uh, cause one of these meetings, I don't know if it was Carol Dawes or Janet Chatney, I don't know. She said that basically there was eighty-six houses imperiled in Berry and thirty-eight or forty were moving or, or would like buyouts. Well, the city knew I was one and Vermont Emergency Management knew I was one. And when I was up to that meeting, Cheryl came over and said, cause I said, well, when do you get the forms or applications to fill out? From you guys, Vermont? No. Chatney said it'd come from us. Um, but with our, my conversation today, Nicholas said that I probably won't be available for that. It's gotta be in a cluster. Now that's not to say that my house is not as badly damaged as one's. But if I'm not in a cluster, I guess I'm, as the old saying, out of luck. But then he gave me this form, said, no, you got this of a city. So I don't know what to do here. I need some direction, some guidance or, uh, so there's no way that well, you said you recommend it to Vermont Emergency or FEMA. So there's no way my house is gonna get recommended for a FEMA buyout.
I would recommend it first to the council, which I haven't done.
Oh.
But the council could, could change that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so I, I shared with Mr., with Gordon, who, like, I feel I can call you Gordon, who's in my office so much.
That's my name, Gordon George.
Um, but yeah, I, I shared, you know, I, I shared with Gordon, look, this is, and it's, it hasn't been our recommendation to advance your property for a FEMA buyout because of all the reasons we mentioned, which you, 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 uh, you were accurate in, in summarizing our conversation.
Yeah.
So I mentioned to Gordon that there is, there is an option that is through a non FEMA buyout. I shared with him the standard option form that we've shared with many other homeowners. Gordon is not in one of those North End clusters, but he's one of those people that Councilor Spalding mentioned, like, they're sort of caught in the middle. So again, that's not an executed document. The council still have to approve an option if we went that way. Um, but I, I think it's, you know, I think it's, it's, Gordon's story is like the Rusus story, except his story wasn't VT Digger. And, you know, everybody who's in a red box on that map has a story like Gordon's or the Rusus. Um, and so that's just, uh, the other property we've been talking about.
Oh.
So I, I just, I just highlighted as, yes, there's a compelling case on Berlin Street, but Mr. George has an equally compelling case. Um, we applied the same standard and I had to tell Gordon, no, and, at least not from, from the city's perspect- from the city staff recommendation, right? That we hadn't advanced it. Um, but there's, you know, every red box on that map has a story similar to Gordon's. And so I talked to him about this being a, an option that the, eventually the council would have to weigh in on as well. I explained to him that, uh, you know, it's unlikely the city could offer the full value because we have the additional costs on top of it. Again, it doesn't have a, a purchase price on it, but it's, um, it's an avenue for some people um, that sort of tries to find a middle ground between the very rigid FEMA rules, um, and the fact that people are stuck in homes that, um, may not be good for them to be in anymore.
Right. Well, you hear ghost stories about FEMA taking years to come through as well. I just would like to put this to bed, you know, one way or the other. So I need direction of what I should do here.
So.
I mean, I'm not looking to put anybody on the spot or anything else, but, uh.
Okay. Can I ask a few questions? So to summarize, you want a buyout.
Well.
You want a buyout, you're not really eligible for FEMA buyout. It's not in the floodway.
Oh, it's in the floodplain.
It is in the floodway, but it's not part of a cluster and you're, you're on the same side as Dente's and you're, you're not across the street from Dente's.
He's, same side. I'm across from the beverage bar, but what I was gonna say, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, is the river's right behind me.
Right.
And I mean, right beside the houses, the railroad tracks. Sicard from Barton dug down here several years ago.
Oh, yeah. Uh, so I understand your location. So the problem is, how do you get out of your place?
Out of your place?
How do you get a way out of the place that you own?
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay. So thanks. I got that. And there isn't, there isn't an easy way out.
No, I, I, I don't think, I mean, I, um, the way out for someone in this position is, I, I mean, unless the council approves a buyout for Mr. George is perhaps through a non FEMA buyout, um, or a, or a sale. Um, and I'm trying to get the map up here so you can see Mr. George's house.
Yeah.
Um, his house is, you can see on the mouse there, it's right four oh eight. So he's not, he's just not clustered. I mean, that's, it's not a crime. It's just a reality of the circumstance. Um, so, just for visual, so you can see where Mr. George's, um, house is.
Well, again, I'm just, um, you're living it for a year, you know, I just, whether it comes from FEMA or the city, I'd just like to know a direction that I should be headed for. That's all. Nothing more. But you know, I'm getting a little off the subject here, but all the time you see the governor and all these people making things completely resilient. My grandmother once said years ago, fire is terrible. You might be able to stop a house fire, but flooding? That's a different story. But Tom, you remember up on what, uh, well, this was after Irene. They took a couple houses down on Harrington Avenue, just made a little flood plain with the green things coming up. And that where the old city dump was, I think you're, might be old enough to remember the old city dump.
I do.
The playground is. They went in and did the same thing there. Did they help any? No, we still have floods. They did. Matter of fact, they hold trees and stuff back, which is one thing, but that's the same thing as having trees in a river where it acts as a overflow. It's like March eleventh, ninety-two Montpelier, the ice overflow. It's the same idea. Um, I remember one of these meetings, uh, a gentleman said, well, dredge rivers, clean them up. And Nicholas, you yourself said, well, that doesn't do any good. And he said, how so? He said, you said, because I read some article once in a book that it doesn't work. You remember that, see? But how, even if you don't want to dig them down, of course, the environment, well, you're, you, you can't move this, you can't do that because you might hurt a tree that's falling down. That's getting a little ridiculous. Bobby Belleville, there's a car down by the old boiler block building, the old Jones Brothers. They had get it out, but environment was there. Well, be careful doing it this way. You might hurt a tree, a tree that's falling down in the river? What is it coming to? So what's my best synopsis here to do?
It, it sounds like we could consider, uh, a city buyout. That would be an option.
Yeah. I'm open to anything here. I just want to lay this baby to rest here. It's, it's eating me out, Tom.
It's not gonna happen.
No?
Maybe people are telling you that it is. They're not being honest with you.
There's no.
There are not great programs, even, even a city, um, a city purchase option, as we've looked at in some properties in the North End. Chances are it would be months, perhaps years.
Well, FEMA would be longer than, you know, I mean.
They could very well be. So the city could, we could consider a city buyout. Um, you could consider mitigation funds. The city, as a manager mentioned, will be getting some mitigation funds. You could plan on, uh, applying for those.
Mitigation funds, how, what you mean?
Raise your home.
Oh, I don't want to do that. I just said I, I'm gonna do a thing, I haven't done a thing.
Flood insurance didn't cover you?
Huh?
Flood insurance didn't?
Well, I didn't have flood insurance. But if you ask Mr. Dente, that doesn't amount to anything anyway. I said.
Mr. Dente's not here to ask.
Well, Mr. Dente used to have it and that's why he doesn't have it today because if you lose stuff, it costs modern day money to fix it. But, uh, with natural flood insurance, well, they say, well, your boilers, uh, the ten thousand replace it. Well, it's twenty-five years old, so here's a thousand. But anyway.
Okay, folks, you need to keep the conversation with the council. Thank you.
But Nicholas gave me this to fill out, or if I wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
Then you're saying it's not gonna work either. Is that what you're saying, Tom?
I don't think I said that at all.
Oh, what did you say then?
I said it would take time.
Well.
It, it would take time for the city to even consider it in terms of the big difference between the FEMA buyout. And this is the part of the FEMA buyout that I dislike the most. You can never put another property there. So even if you built this podium style building, even if we changed the course of the river, even if by some miracle, climate change reversed itself.
Yeah.
Okay? You can never put a property there. It is a huge flaw in that FEMA program because the city has to be so careful about affecting a FEMA buyout because once we do, there's not an application. An engineer can't go back to FEMA and say, well, the city did that in two thousand twenty-four. And now it's two thousand two hundred and twenty-four. It's two hundred years later and technology has evolved to the point where we could put a piece of, you know, could put something there. Can't do it. It's perpetually prohibited. That's why we have to be so careful with the FEMA buyouts, not to mention that it deteriorates, it deteriorates the tax base, the city's grant list, because no one can ever build there. The property is effectively worthless, uh, city owned, so we can't assess property taxes on it anyway. That program, like I said, it could take, not saying the council wouldn't consider it. I'm just saying that if you're, if you're sitting before the council saying, I, and this is what I'm hearing, I don't blame you. You want some direction, you want some finality to what you're going through. I wish I could provide that to you, Gordon. I can't.
The whole count.
I mean, we could certainly consider that, but even that is not going to be a thirty day process.
Well, need.
Right, so.
That's not what I'm looking for. FEMA would take years.
Mm-hmm. So if, if you do want to complete that, we can certainly consider it.
Right. And it, it's not a guarantee.
If I'm not gonna get it, the buyout from FEMA, this is my next step, is what I'm trying to say.
It, it, it's a, right, what I mentioned, Gordon, it's a, it's a possibility, right? Like, that's, that's the, that's the non FEMA way to do it, right? Cause we were talking about, I was explaining why the FEMA option hasn't been recommended for your property. Because we were talking about, I was explaining why the FEMA option hasn't been recommended for your property, right? And the reason it hasn't been recommended for your property is because it's not clustered with other properties along the river, right? So, we got to talking about what is the non-FEMA option, and I shared with you, this is the non-FEMA option. Now, there are many things I can do as manager, executing an option is not one of them, but that's, you know, that's something if you, if, that's something, if, if, if you reviewed it with a lawyer and you were comfortable with it, that's something I can speak to the council about, it doesn't guarantee that it happens. Um, but this is, this was to tell you, like, this is the way to go about a buyout without FEMA in the middle. Even that is not months, it's ye- it's years plus, uh, because of the option period anyway that's in there and it's securing funding to do it. So, um, it, it's not, having that piece of paper is not the guarantee that that's the route it goes. It's just, uh, a way for the, the council and the city to consider whether that's a, an, an appropriate approach, um, for, for your property.
Amy Gelford has her hand up.
Amy.
But this is the better way to go in the city's eyes, right? Because FEMA, it goes back to patuity and you can't do nothing.
Amy?
I guess.
I just want to point out again, I'm struggling to understand the power point. Where the maps on the PowerPoint cut off.
Might be experiencing, you're sounding like Max Headroom, you might have some internet difficulty.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
No, it's weird, all of a sudden you're echoing.
Okay, um, I'll just try to, I'll just say, the way the power points are cut, um, four, five, four, seven, eight, and four, twenty-five are on one side and four, oh, eight.
Yeah, you're not coming through at all, Amy, I'm sorry. You were. Maybe you try logging on, logging, or logging off, logging back on?
Or put it in the chat.
Put it in the chat, we could read it.
Yeah.
I'll try, I'll try.
Do what?
Put it in the chat.
Oh.
She could just type out whatever she was trying to say.
Uh, unfortunately, some Main Street are shown.
Yeah, they're adjacent to a creek.
Correct.
They, they are close by, but, yes, Amy, they are close by, but, um, they're not adjacent, correct.
Exactly.
That's, that's the, the issue.
So, Guston, I believe, has a.
Yeah, and we usually say that chat is only used for technical difficulties, not communication.
This is a communication.
That was a technical difficulty.
Well.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
So I got nothing to lose by?
By completing that, no. Absolutely, it, it doesn't bind either party until it's accepted by both parties, Gordon, so, no. You have absolutely nothing to lose.
Okay, I got it, Nicholas recommended having a lawyer look at it.
Well, that's, that, that certainly would be advisable, it, it, it's up to you. Yeah.
But doesn't sound like I got anything to lose, it's not breath life-saving.
No, it's not, like, as I said, it's not binding until.
Pay a lawyer a million bucks to.
Well, I, I, yeah.
Well, you know how they.
But it's.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And here's something I've been wanting to say for years, and I haven't had the gall to say it, but I will. This is nothing to do with flooding. This is completely off the record. Berry City, for years and years now, seems to have, I won't say money troubles, but you gotta make the budget and, uh, so the school budget doesn't get passed and, and on and on and on. Well, I got a surefire way to cure all that. It would give you a lot of money, you wouldn't have to worry about money. What did the big companies do? IBM, GE, what's that, what did all of them do? No more pensions. It's self input, they knew that. Now, the Berry City, correct me if I'm wrong, you got firemen, policemen, teachers, I shouldn't go too loud, my daughter's a teacher herself, but think of the money you'd pay if you didn't, I mean, they make pretty good salaries, the fifty years they're working are forty. Do away with their pensions, you'd have all the money you need.
Thank you.
Lawsuits, and the lawsuits would be staggering.
Do enough to do away with it, now we're on a small budget. Do away with all these pensions, these people, you'll have all kinds of money.
Okay, thank you, Gordon, we'll talk to you soon. Ellen, did you have something you'd like to say?
Councilor Guston has been waiting.
Okay.
And waiting?
I'm sorry?
Uh, Councilor Guston has been waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
I would just like to state my understanding of what a city buyout process would look like and have perhaps the city manager correct me, just so folks who are listening and hearing city buyout know exactly what that, what that means, because I think that there's maybe at least a little bit of blurriness around that potentially. Uh, so my understanding of what a city buyout process is, is that the, the options would be executed between the homeowner and the city. The city would have to find the money to purchase and then demolish those homes. That money would have to either come out of our regular budget or through applications for funding beyond, we mentioned earlier, a CDS possibility. At that time, the city would own an empty lot that it would attempt to contract with a developer to replace some kind of building in that place, and we've talked about net gain in housing. Is that an accurate?
Yep.
Summation of that process? I just wanted to, to spell that all out for folks who are wondering, first of all, what that means, and second of all, why that could potentially take years.
And it is a purchase option, not a purchase obligation. So we sign a document that says, if the city can find the funding, if the city thinks it's a good project, if we can move it forward, then we can choose to exercise the option to purchase. It does not give the seller the absolute right to sell.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure my understanding was correct and that it was stated clearly for people listening.
Ellen Kay, did you have a question or a comment?
I do have a comment, um, Ellen Kay, Berry City, I, it's been heartbreaking listening to this. Um, to think about just these couple of folks who have spoken and multiply that by all of the suffering that's happening here. And I understand the council and everybody is working with what options we have to both mitigate and try to make people whole, and it sounds like we can't come anywhere near that. I'm glad somebody mentioned climate change, because there is more water, there is warmer water, there are bigger storms, and this, this is our reality now. I want to point out that more than two dozen US cities, states and counties are suing oil companies because of damage caused by climate change. Our, our cities and towns don't have money for this, and we didn't cause it. So I'm wondering if Berry City would be open to looking at joining some of those lawsuits? Because we will be bled dry, I mean, it's, it's what's happening. And the oil companies have known about climate change since the seventies. So there is a movement happening to hold them accountable, because our cities don't have the money, FEMA doesn't have the money, the government doesn't, nobody has the money that it takes to deal with the destruction that is happening now. Fires, floods, all of it. Um, there are entities that have the money, and they're the ones who profited off of this in the billions. So I, I'm, I am suggesting that our city take a look at joining in one of these lawsuits, joining other cities and towns, um, because I, that's who's got the money to pay for it, and that's who's profited off of this destruction. And we are cleaning up after it three times already in one year. So I just wanted to let people know about that, and I'm so sorry for everybody who's spoken tonight and what you're going through. It's very hard to hear it and know it and live in it.
Thank you. Anything else under this topic? Counselor will move on to eight C, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
I, I wonder if it'd be helpful to put something on the city's website that says, here's the new reality. Maybe softer than this, but there is going to be more intense rain events for the foreseeable future. There is going to be flooding for the foreseeable future. There are no miracle cures that we have that we can whip out in the next six months. So, just so that we're clear with people about, we don't ha- we don't have a solution. We can't do a miracle overnight cure that's gonna reduce all the, all the impacts of flooding. It's gonna continue, that's the reality of climate change, that's the reality of the way the city is built. And people need to appreciate that. I mean, we can certainly encourage people to do whatever sort of fixes they can make to their cellar and to their places, but the reality is that the city doesn't have any miracles, nor a ton of money, and this is, this is where we are. And we're at the beginning of climate change, we're not at the end.
Thank you. So, I mean, we can certainly talk about that, Counselor, but I'd rather, I'd like to have some options, I mean, there are options. Unfortunately, the resources are scarce. As the manager mentioned, the city will get, um, flood mitigation funds that we can offer to homeowners. There's the emergency management grant that homeowners can apply for. But in terms of, you know, when folks talk about, I'm done, I want you, city, to buy my property, we don't have a whole lot of options. We have FEMA, we need to use that judiciously and within the criteria that the manager and the staff has established. Or we have perhaps a purchase option with the city, and that is contingent upon the city finding even more funds to purchase those properties, so there.
Yes, I understand that.
There are not a lot of options out there for folks.
And people like, like Mr. George need to understand that. That he doesn't have, there isn't going to be something that happens within the next six months.
I'm, yeah, we'd be, I'd be happy to work with you to come up with something that we could put on the webpage and make people available that, you know, are aware that this is gonna be a, this is a hard path, and it's a path that nobody likes. Council doesn't like it, the manager doesn't like it, and the property owners don't like it. So we'll work on that. Uh, Counselor, we're at item eight C on the agenda. This is the draft flood resiliency plan update, counselors, Wasak and Guston.
There is a quick PowerPoint rather than going through page by page again.
Thank you.
I just summarized it.
Uh, just summarizing, so we, the, the document is also in the packet, these updates are reflected.
Uh, so if you could go to our first piece, uh, we made some updates and just summarize them quickly here. We integrated the specific projects as named in the EPA Community Change Grant that we've discussed a little bit this evening. Uh, we added one piece under infrastructure that is suggested green procurement policy that recommends the city pursue, um, green options whenever it has the chance to, uh, as a very small, admittedly very small, but a nod towards, um, playing our part in the larger challenge of climate change. Uh, fixed some of the links that have been, um, pointed out in previous conversations, and again, just some more light wordsmithing. So, next slide please.
And sorry, for the fixed links, we just took out the short URLs and put them all in the end.
I appreciate that, thank you.
So, uh, the real, the goal that Counselor Wasak and I discussed in bringing this, uh, to council this evening is to discuss as a council and come to an agreement on sort of what next steps might be to truly finalize this plan. We have all of these things on this list, and the next, uh, list are just suggestions. Um, and we would appreciate council feedback, additions or tweaks to any of these things. Uh, and then the idea would be that Counselor Wasak and I would sort of take point on carrying out to get to a flood resiliency plan for the city that council could formally adopt at a future meeting. So, our suggestions, uh, for what's next, uh, point first, integrate projects that are identified, and we discussed this evening and August twenty-seven, uh, go on those projects. Um, I had put in a note, uh, the historian in me appreciated the photographs and things earlier that the Rivers folks shared. I put in a note, writing a timeline of previous flooding response and recovery, just so that we had as part of this plan what we had been through. Um, a point of meeting with mayor, counselors and city officials for direct feedback on specific parts of the plan. We've had council level discussions, but making sure that we are having deep and thoughtful conversations and making sure that's all reflected within the plan, and then also making sure we do that with resident meetings. We've heard many, many pieces of excellent feedback from residents over the past several weeks, um, and making opportunities for one-on-one feedback, um, direct feedback on either a piece or the totality of the plan. Uh, scheduling Oprah's residence forums, we talked about a lot of possibilities for ways to do this, should they be by theme and section? We, uh, VCRD has indicated that they have some funding that could help support, uh, forums. We talked about, there's a lot of ways we could do this, we would obviously, um, get some city support on the planning and execution of those. Um, establish appendix with ongoing list of potential projects. Uh, as the mayor has said repeatedly, the, the list is far, far longer than we can tackle in anyone's outlook on either time or money, so making sure that the plan includes an appendix, a, a sort of parking lot of, of projects that we have thought about and that could be incorporated into future iterations of the plan. And then the goal for all of this would be, what we're proposing is a plan that council could adopt and then move forward on by the end of October twenty twenty-four. So I'll, I'll pause there and see if there's any feedback on any of these steps that we are suggesting.
Sounds great, and I loved the introduction of a timeline.
Thank you.
The one-on-one, would you be better off kind of integrating those one-on-one resi- you know, we've talked about having neighborhood meetings? So could we do neighborhood mea- I mean, the one-on-one, there are a lot of people, we got a small taste of it this evening, there's a lot of people who have a lot to say about their experience in the city's recovery. And so I just wonder, you know, we're looking at, um, partway through August, September, October, so give or take, let's call it seventy-five days. Um, would there be time for, to offer one-on-one resident meetings?
Uh, so.
It's your time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll, I'll.
It's like, holy cow.
Look to Counselor Wasak as well, but what I was envisioning when I wrote that in was saying, over the next three weeks, someone will be at Espresso Bueno every morning from eight to nine, will buy you a cup of coffee and sit down with us, that kind of thing. And putting a time limited options for booking something or coming during that time period kind of thing as a, as, to form that piece of it, but I don't know if Counselor, you.
Yeah, we weren't imagin- and you know, like, just, because you like, Amy Gelford has a lot of expertise in this, so it might be worth just like sitting down with her to do a deep dive about, you know, that kind of stuff. That was more the, rather than sucking up all of our time doing a million meetings.
Yeah, more an observation than a suggestion.
Yep.
So, I think this is well, well thought out, appreciate your work, and look forward to adopting this, understanding that as funding opportunity, I mean, it's gonna change.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just gonna look very different.
So we actually discussed, so.
There are two more slides.
Yep, we'll go, um, so, I'm just, we're pitching as final plan format, each section of the plan can have an introduction sort of saying, this is what's dealt with in this section and why. Each project will have its own page with description of the project, identified partners. Um, we'd heard the feedback from previous council meetings, that people, it was important to people that we identify what role the city can actually play. Counselor Spalding had identified that earlier this evening with the Tressel project, for example, like, what can the city actually do? In that case, advocacy. Um, what resources we understand at the moment, at that moment in time to be needed to carry through that project and the current status of the project with the idea that that would be updated on an occasional basis to, to track progress on a particular project. An appendix with completed projects, the front page of that appendix is a checklist. Basically, when a project is completed, it's moved to that section and we have an actual checklist. We have done this, here's a, a statement of our progress as we move through. So that's what we're proposing for the, for the plan format. Any, any feedback on that piece before?
I think that would be great for the residents of the city and for the council, just to have this, here's where we are in this project, here's completed projects, I just think that would give us a concrete way to say, here's where we're, here's where we're moving towards, here's what we've done. I think it would feel pretty reassuring to have that as a document.
Next slide. Yeah, thank you. So in order to sort of get to those, as the mayor said, this plan is going to necessarily keep changing over the years as we move forward as a city. So following adoption of the plan, we're proposing that when we look at this, building out council agendas going forward, that we always make sure that one or two projects within that plan are, are scheduled for updates at every council meeting. I think we are likely to be looking at something like that anyway. But using that as, as a guide, making sure that we are, we are touching each project over the course of like a full year's worth of council conversations and seeing where it is. And then an actual formal plan to review, update, and then revise the plan every six months. Either projects get adjusted because the funding hasn't materialized. We need to identify a new funding place. Or good news, it's been completed. One of the pieces that we put in is the hydrology study of the city. And we've discussed about moving that forward tonight. So we would update that and then move it to the completed section of the plan. But a formal check-in on it to make sure we are on track with it being a still useful and relevant document every six months. If anyone had any feedback on the plan for follow-up?
Yeah, I think that's, that's good to have that flow and continuity.
It is to try to strike a balance between, we know it needs to be adjusted and updated, but updating every month is just, it's too much to keep up on.
Could I ask a question? The last time we talked about this plan, you, we talked about sort of categorizing projects in short-term, medium-term and long-term. Is that still part of the process?
Thank you, thank you for reminding me of that. I think it should be.
Because I, as I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, Sam, Counselor Stockwell's point about, you know, we, we should put something on the website about, you know, here, here's what we're doing. But I wish we could give homeowners, property owners, an idea of what they could do. And maybe it's as simple as, you know, depending on where they are, I'm not talking about necessarily waters pouring into my basement because I am adjacent to the river. But, you know, if someone has flooding because of, of something happening, maybe they can install rain, rain barrels. Maybe they can do, what are those gardens? You know, whatever, rain gardens, whatever it is. I think there's an organization will come in and do a review of your property. And so if we could have links for that, just how can we help property owners mitigate, even in the very short term, to get us to the point where our projects are starting to make a difference, the bigger projects?
I think that's an excellent idea.
And one of the points of the plan, I forget which section it's under, but is, is around resident education. It's around providing opportunities to learn exactly, exactly what you're, what you're describing. And I think we envision the plan as great once we would, in that section then say, great, we held a workshop on this day. Here's the resources that came out of that workshop. So it's a living resource document. Even once it gets moved to the quote-unquote completed project. I mean, education is ever really completed, frankly. So does that one ever move there is a, is a philosophical question, really. But, but the idea would be that this would actually be a document that lives and breathes in that way.
Counsel, you had a question or a comment?
No, I was essentially just going to say, you're looking for a resource page, Counselor Stock, us, Spalding, on the website for how people can do stuff to help themselves.
Yeah, and we could add that in as like, not as a standalone section, but that could be a subsection of this document under like community and staff capacity or information. Yeah.
Yep, that's our last, that's our last slide. Great. So it sounds like there's general agreement on what we've laid out this evening. So I would say that Counselor Wazak and I will proceed along the list as we had, as we had named it. Sort of beginning meeting points. We'll work with the, the city manager on how city staff can sort of help support resident forums and bring updates on, on timeline and, and things that happen as, as they get planned. And would obviously, and of course, welcome any other counselors to jump in, work on any pieces of this with us. And we will be making sure to follow up directly as well. Thank you, everyone.
Good work. Thank you. So you know how you go through your day and all of a sudden something pops in your head and you're like, oh yeah, I meant to do this. In the minutes, because, and only because this is a serious document. Remember I had emailed you and I said the council had authorized the mayor to execute a purchase option?
Oh, that's-
This is what was with, in our packet. Remember last week, the week, at our last meeting, Nicholas was not here. And we had the purchase option to exercise with Downstreet for Wabi Park. And you authorized the mayor, because it's a real estate document, the mayor has executed those. And then I had emailed the clerk because I read the draft minutes earlier.
Right, the minutes were corrected. I don't know where-
Oh, okay. But this was, I'm just saying, this was in our packet and it did still say manager, even though I know you had corrected it. So I just wanted to make sure that got in there because like I said, it's a, it's a legally binding document.
Has already, has been-
Yeah.
Was not ratified.
Yeah.
It's for next session, so-
Okay, cool. All right. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, counsel, we are at approval of the fiscal year twenty-five municipal and local agreement tax rates. This is the one that always gives me fit, it's one year, because we actually came perilously close to approving a tax rate that was incorrect because of the calculation error. So ever since then, I go through it sideways forwards. I actually do the math.
I hope you did.
I double check the math by hand. And I just need to have the two of you assure me that someone else has checked this besides you. So four of us have. And, all right, so Nicholas, why don't you take us through this? Or, or-
Well, I can take you through this.
Go for it.
Okay. So for the sake of the municipal tax, we're focusing on the figures that are in the orange highlighted areas. Education tax, that'll happen later when the budget is voted. So looking at the first figure, it's, what it is, it's the portion of the municipal funds that need to be raised by taxes. And that is ten million and some change. And then you have your paving, street construction, voter-approved assistance. That's just, you know, Good Samaritan. You've got your council on aging, a few other community entities, as well as the Rainbow Bridge Center. And then you have the voter-approved exemptions. These are exemptions that, that you ease the tax for them, like the Good Samaritan. The veterans, anything beyond the first ten thousand, the city has to make good. And so you, you're calculating all those together and dividing that by the hundred percent rule. So you're moving the decimal to the right. So for the twenty-twenty-five tax rate, not including the local rate, we have two-point-one-one-four-seven. And then you're adding the local, which is the veterans, the exemptions. That local tax rate is the point zero-zero-five-six, bringing it to a total of two-point-one-two-zero-three for the twenty-twenty-five year. Adding to that, which is an interim homestead education rate. This is a rate that the state issues us. Right now, it is at one-point-three-zero-five-one. For the homestead rate, adding all of them together, we have a rate of three-point-four-two-five-four. Municipal non-homestead rate, that is issued with the state, from the state as well. And I don't see that one changing. That was what was issued from the state. And it's not really based on the budget. And that is currently at one-point-eight-one-five-five. The non-homestead rate with the municipal, the local agreement would be three-point-nine-three-five-eight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a general question about contracts. Some of these contracts look like they were negotiated a really long time ago. Are they periodically looked at? And given the, the place the city is in, should they be renegotiated? Like, is Reynolds House a nonprofit?
Could we renegotiate it? We, we likely could. Any contract can be renegotiated. Would we be, I mean, I suppose we could ask, but would we be likely to be successful when?
Well, don't the contracts have some sort of expiration point? The point which they renegotiated?
Yeah, any tax stabilization, a, a, any agreement has an expiration point. Some are five years, some are ten years. It depends on the size of the project.
Except some of them don't.
I'm sorry?
Some of them don't have an expiration date.
Uh, I'm not sure.
Spectrum Northeast, that was negotiated March of ninety-seven. And then Trustees of the Berry, I don't know what the rest of that is. And then Studio Place Arts. There's no beginning or end date on those last two.
Let's see, beginning, ending. No, maybe they, Spectrum Northeast, I'm not sure. And Trustees of Berry Lives, that must be Elf Club?
Oh, yes.
Uh, and then Studio Place Arts, again, I don't think, so no, on those three, I don't believe there is an expiration date on them.
What's Spectrum Northeast? That's-
Martin's Service? Spectrum, Spectrum Utility? City Manager Estrelia Castro, do you think it is worth considering to improve the city's position to renegotiate some of these contracts?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm certainly happy to look at the contracts and see what the terms are. I mean, sometimes that, most of the times, that's spelled out in the contracts themselves. So I don't think there's any harm in seeing what those, what those options may be. But like I said, there, there, there may or may not be opportunities based on what the text of the contracts say. But I'm happy to see what, what the options are.
Thank you.
Stop the pensions.
Now you're thinking.
Okay, so we are, so counsel, we are approving the fiscal year twenty-five municipal and local agreement rate. Keep in mind, we don't do, we're not doing the school rate. So the appropriate motion would be to approve, approve the fiscal year twenty-five tax rate of two-point-one-one-four-seven and the local agreement tax rate of point zero-zero-five-six.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, question?
Perhaps a little bit pedantic, but a conflict of interest question. My employer is one of the, the non-taxable parcels on this list. Should I abstain from this?
The not-
On the non-taxable parcels list, should I abstain from this vote?
No, I think so. By statute, they're on the, they're by either agreement or statute, so it's not anything. While it may be your employer, it's not anything you have anything to do with.
That was my hush, but I did want to be very transparent about it and check in. Thank you.
You're fine. Any other questions? Yes.
I do.
Go ahead.
What's, what's proportion of non-taxable parcels in this city? Would that be a question anybody knows? Proportion of the budget, or not, not the budget. What's proportion of non-taxable parcels that make up the city?
I will tell you it's significant and I'll get you the, the answer to that question.
Thanks. The other, my other question is, do we have a contract with HUD? Like, so do we hold a contract with HUD that says they're going to provide these housing services? And that's what the contract is? And in return, we give them the land and there's no contract?
Not aware of it. The, when you talk about HUD, are you talking specifically about like Harry Housing Authority?
Yes.
So there are, there are certain agreements in place for each of the properties that were developed that dictate how much we can charge, how much we can charge them for property taxes. We can get you copies of that.
So there's a formula of some kind?
Yes.
Thanks.
So it's not something that we could, for example, just like with Downstreet. You know, when we provide, we know that there is going to be a reduction. You know, Ward Five School, that project, big win because that was not taxable at all. But there are-
Well, they, they do a pilot.
Yeah, exactly. And that pilot is by agreement. So when you were asking about HUD and is there an agreement? Yes, there's always either a formula in statute or some sort of agreement with the city that dictates how much they will be charged, either again, by formula or agreement for property taxes. Any other questions?
Counselor Dearing had a-
Answered the question.
Any other? Nothing? Going once, going twice? All those in favor of the motion is presented. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Counsel, we are at item eight E on the agenda. We're setting the water and sewer rates. You have that memorandum in briefing?
Thanks.
Who would like to go through that?
I'll cover that one, mayor. So thank you. The, I sent you a revised memo, which included the, the calculations we normally do to show you the impacts on low, average and high users of the system. So the new memo shows you that the typical low user of the system will see an increase of twelve dollars and eighty cents per quarter. A typical average user would be thirty-six dollars fifty-eight cents per quarter. And a typical high user would see an increase of sixty dollars and thirty-six cents per quarter. And just for, for reference, that's calculated here by adding the base, the water base increase plus the, the user range for that system. And then the sewer base plus their usage of sewer. So you can sort of get all the variations of what, what residents maybe, may see in their bills. We kept the increases, the, at the same percentage increase rates as last year. And for water, that's a three percent increase on the base and a three percent increase on the usage. For sewer, that's a five percent increase on the base and a twenty-one percent increase on the usage. Recognize, acknowledge, these are high, especially on the sewer side. That particular fund continues to be in, you know, financial straits. And, and a lot of that is driving this. One of them is the plant is old. It has a lot of maintenance, deferred maintenance that hasn't occurred that is expensive. We also have entered, we settled a, an illegal discharge claim last year. And there's an assurance of discontinuance that requires hiring more staff at the wastewater treatment facility. So that by itself is an increase of almost a hundred twenty thousand dollars to the sewer budget from last year. The headworks engineering, which the council has approved those contracts and thank you for that. That's the, the key cog to get the plant in better shape. Those are sixty thousand dollars. The, the headworks, as you know, removes grit and rags. And those are things that are just perpetual problems on other parts of the, of the, of the plant. And then this was, you know, an eye-opener, but the primary chemical used, which is sodium aluminate, the cost increased, and this is not a mistake, a hundred two thousand dollars, and eight-hundred-and-forty-five. So a, almost a hundred three thousand. So that's an increase in the chemical price and an increase in the required feed rate to maintain our compliance with the permit. So the costs of operating the plant are high. The fund was already at a, at a sort of a structural deficit. That's why we are proposing and requesting the council's approval of these rates. And that's to basically try to almost keep up. If we had to give you, bring you a rate to give us comfort that we wouldn't end the year in a deficit, the numbers would be much higher. This is to help us not fall further behind. So that's the, the summary here. And I'm happy to answer questions on it. As I said, the real intent here was to help us not fall further behind, especially on the, on the sewer side.
Yes.
Counsel.
Oh, well, you can go left, right, whatever.
Tell me why we-
Um, tell me why we charge the same exact rate for Berry City as we do for Berry Town?
We have, uh, an intermunicipal agreement that, that dictates the, the rates that we can pay. We can reopen that agreement, um, but that, there's, uh, there's, that's like a contract as well, there's process associated with that. Um, so, there is, it is a, um, it is a governed by an agreement.
And how long are those agreements in effect for?
Uh.
Long time.
Yeah, it's a long time.
The run-up period to terminating the agreement is three years.
Yeah.
So if we no longer wish to, we basically have to give them three years' notice, if we wish to terminate or renegotiate the agreement. I mean, practically speaking, municipalities, um, it's not unusual. For example, you know, kind of the gold standard cases, um, the town of Rutland, uh, sued the city of Rutland, because the city of Rutland proposed to charge the town of Rutland a higher, uh, water rate, sewer rate, or both. And the city of Rutland's, um, contention was that they had paid for all of the infrastructure. So all of the infrastructure that ran through the city of Rutland, the city residents had paid for, and then they sold, uh, water to the town. So, it seemed reasonable that the city, uh, would be required to a reasonable return on their investment. And I think the rate at that time was twenty or twenty-five percent higher. So that's what Rutland was proposing to charge the town of Rutland, twenty-five percent more than the city residents paid. Town of Rutland sued, town of Rutland lost. So the courts have established that, um, certainly in this, in our case, in the city of Berry's case, if we decided that we should be getting a return, and it's a conversation I'm very open to, should the city of Berry be getting a reasonable return on what is, in our case, about a twenty-million-dollar investment? So it, it's, if you ever have, wanna have the question, let me know.
I just asked, I a hundred percent wanna talk about that.
And, yeah, I mean, I, I'd, I'd support giving the town notice tomorrow. It doesn't mean, it's not a war, and it's not, we're gonna extort my, i- it's business. It's about, we have a multi-million dollar investment in, a- and this goes back to our original investment. Generally speaking, the rates that our town, that our neighbors in the town pay, like the manager was just saying, their ra- their rate will help pay for that position too. Their increase in rate, just like ours will, will help pay for those chemicals too. But their rate going way back didn't, they didn't pay back then, so they didn't contribute towards any of the infrastructure. Yes?
Well, a couple of things. One is, we had talked about this several years ago, and the agreement was that we wanted to renegotiate because of the obvious.
Right.
And so, yeah, I too wanna re- renegotiate. I had volunteered to help do it, because it, I'll be polite, it makes me really angry. And the other thing is, what's a shame about the water and the sewer is that everything is converging at the same time. You know, everything is hitting the fan, and we're paying, we're having to compensate for what we haven't done in the past. And I think you had made the comment about how you'd like to come to council with a budget that really reflects what we have to be looking at if we wanna survive, I guess I'd say. And I think we really need to start having those conversations, and those have to go on the website too, because, um, we're sucking air big time, and it stinks.
Well, that's one way to put it, thank you. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm amenable to the conversation, because it's, it's fair, but I wanna be, I wanna be thoughtful about how we have the conversation, because a lot of times you end up. I'm not interested in starting a war, I'm interested in fairness, I'm interested in facts, I'm, you know, I threw around twenty million, because I know the number is around twenty million, it's not exactly twenty million. But I'm interested in having, having the facts first. If, uh, obviously, we have to give notice, and we'll give plenty of notice, and we can have that discussion sooner rather than later. Like I said, it's not a war, it's just about.
No.
A simple return on what is a, a really, really expensive investment, and one that we have to keep investing in. Yes?
What would council's next steps be towards giving that notice? Would there be a motion at the council meeting to authorize the manager to begin that?
Um, for, I think the first step would be, um, the first step, I mean, we're talking about a three-year notice period. I think the first step, what I would first like to do is just get a, get a copy of the agreement in everyone's hands. So I'm gonna ask the manager to send that sometime this week, have the manager send that to the council so that you can see it, and then it will be very apparent. I think there, there is, as with any document, some sort of notice procedure, I wanna make sure we get it right. So I'll make sure that you, you get that. I actually looked at that not long ago, Nicholas sent it to me, so, because I was just thinking that very thing, so, we'll get that to you. But in the meanwhile, counsel, you do need to approve the, um, wh- if you are inclined, you do need to approve the, uh, water and sewer rates as outlined by the manager.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion or any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, I'm just gonna pass around a resolution, it, it is done by resolution, so if you could please sign, um, Council, Council Dearing.
So you're gonna start at that end, so I'll start at this end, we're at roundtable, Councilor Stockwell.
I'll pass.
As is Spalding?
Um, so, on the same day as the Heritage Festival, I had the, um, opportunity to go to the BOR and see they're having a box lacrosse tournament, championship, I don't know, something. It was very, uh, very well-attended, and, um, I'm once again gonna pitch the idea that I think we should have turf year-round in the BOR. Let the people start coming with the pitchforks. But, these kids were having a blast, and not everybody plays hockey, and not everybody skates. And so I would just encourage us to think about how we can make better use of that building, and, um, there were people from all over the state, it was really great. So that's the first thing. And the second thing is just a shout-out to our DPW, um, there was a water main break, like, at the corner, like, one house away from my house, and they fixed it in record time, I swear, and it was amazing. And I just appreciate, they were there until probably eleven o'clock at night, and they were fast, they were efficient, and, um, I just appreciate how, how well they work, how fast they work. So, thank you.
Counselor Wazizak?
Pass.
Come back.
Mm, pass.
Preston?
Uh, driving over this evening, I heard a note on the radio saying that the Red Cross is advertising a crucial blood shortage, so it encourages everyone who is able to donate blood to please make sure, um, that you connect with the Red Cross and do that. They come pretty regularly to Alumni Hall, they're lovely people. Um, I wish I could donate blood right now, but I cannot, so, um, please, please get out there and do that if you're able to.
Council Dearing?
Just really wanna echo what Councilor Spalding said about the box lacrosse championships. Um, the opportunity that, that we've had to get turf installed at the BOR, um, to me is a game-changer. Um, where we saw a building that sat empty for many months throughout the summer, uh, and now we're seeing revenue being driven into it. But not just revenue being driven into the building, but people being driven into the building, people being, being driven into our communities, to fill our communities in so many different ways. Um, so really just a big shout-out to all the many people that were involved in putting the, the turf down, um, because it was not an easy task. Um, it took over a year to do, um, but through many people's hard work, um, it was accomplished, and, uh, I'm just really thankful to see it really paying off.
Thank you. So, here we find ourselves again, watching the weather reports. Pay attention, folks, I mean, um, react, don't overreact. Um, Nicholas and the rest of the staff will make sure, as he said earlier, that the city webpage is updated. Pay attention to the weather, weather forecasts, most of this weather we're going to see is, uh, Friday and Saturday.
Of course, it's the weekend.
Atheist or not, just say a damn prayer, God, just give us a break one time, please.
Are we having an executive session?
Yes.
We are having an executive session, and with that, counsel, I need a motion for findings. We're gonna go into an executive session, and we're going to discuss personnel and real estate.
I'll move. Second.
Moved and seconded for findings, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Uh, and now I'll need a motion to enter executive session, manager will be joining us, we will be discussing personnel and real estate.
So move. She can have it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, will be in executive session in just a few minutes.
Yep, same, excuse me.
You can use the bathroom.